Wednesday, 2024. This is Jared Nogaji calling and being to order. Anson, please do a roll call vote to determine the quorum.
Okay. When I call your name, please say present. Okay, Zane?
Present.
Okay, Al Watson? Ellen? Ellen?
She's on, I see her, but she seems to be having audio problems, so please mark her as present.
Okay, Bozel? Whitney? Okay. Okay, Nogaji's here. Fukamoto?
Here.
Hey, Lumen? Clyde? Okay. Lee? Phil? Phil?
I'm here.
I mean, Phil Lee.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. Joanne Coff?
I'm here.
Okay. Diane Tong?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Moylan's here?
Here.
Jason DiMarco?
Present.
Okay. Patti Quano? Okay. Robert Fox?
Here.
And Joseph Mishreki? Mishreki? Okay. That's nine members. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Anson.
I apologize for joining late. This is a member Mishreki.
Sorry, you're good.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're at 10 then. So with that, we'll go into, we'll go into Room Number 2, that's for responder monthly reports. Do we have a representative from the Honolulu Fire Department here today?
Yes, hi.
Hi, thanks for me. Please go ahead.
Okay, okay, good evening, everybody. I am Keith Endo, of Engine 22, the Manoa Fire Station. The October, or pardon, the run calls for September where there was one structured fire call, eight activated alarms, and we went to 56 medical calls, and the Manoa Fire Truck responded to five motor vehicle collisions. The safety tip for the month is smoke alarms, make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit fpw.org. And a few tips we'd like to share is install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level of the home. The second tip is test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, and lastly, replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested. And that is my safety message for October.
All right, thank you for the report. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the board? If so, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice, and do we have any comments or questions from community members? Okay, I see no hands, so thank you for the report. We'll see you again next month, and we're going to move to the Honolulu Police Department report. So do we have a representative from HPD with us tonight?
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Aramir from District 7.
Good evening, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start the statistics, motor vehicle thefts. We had eight burglaries, four thefts, 13 UEMVs, which is unauthorized entry to motor vehicle, 10 total calls for service, 6,119. Moving into the tips, safety tips, being October, we're going to go into the Halloween safety tips. Some tips for trick-or-treaters, night costumes that are bright and reflective, or by adding reflective tape or striping, secure emergency identification, name, address, phone numbers directly within a costume, or on a bracelet. Everyone should have a flashlight to be seen and see. Tips for parents, know who your children will be with and have their parents contact members. Young children should be accompanied by an adult. And tips for homeowners, eliminate tripping hazards on your porch and walkway. Check for flowerpots, boll tree limbs, support wires, or garden hoses that may prove to be hazardous to young children rushing from house to house. And that's all.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant. Do we have any board members with questions or comments for HPD? If so, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice. See a hand from Robert Fox. Go ahead.
I have a message from one of our residents, Vanita. She would like the police department to do something about a homeless screaming Ivan person that I'm sure you're very familiar with. Every day, he walks up and down University Avenue, at least twice a day, sometimes more. He's become a lot more aggressive lately. Stole some money from children. Went to a lemonade stand on University near Alala Way. And she was so afraid that she crossed University in the middle of traffic to get away from him. So I understand that we are limited in terms of what we can do with homeless individuals, but this guy is a danger to the community. We have brought this up to the police departments at times, and I don't want to vilify people, but seriously, he is at 51-50, a danger to himself and others. And he seems to be getting worse. I would request that the police department, if you can't do it, could you get a resource person out there to somehow try to mitigate this problem on University Avenue? It's really quite dangerous. I live on University near Miley Way, and we see him at least twice a day screaming and yelling. He's come up to my gates and pounded on the doors. So we sort of need some help here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fox, what was his name again? Screaming Ivan? Is that what you said?
Ivan is his name. He's a homeless individual. He sleeps in Commonelli Park, and sometimes in Manoa Park. Of late, he's been sleeping in a tent in Commonelli Park.
Okay.
A bicycle last week, had that for a little while. All of a sudden, the bicycle's gone again, so he may have disposed of that for whatever drug he's on. But he's pretty, seems like a crystal meth addict, I would say.
Okay. To help us, to aid us, anytime, like if he's acting a certain way, or if he's being, you know, violent, or that kind of stuff, where he's stepping into traffic, by all means, if they can call 911. I mean, we have, you know, a handful of residentially challenged individuals that we deal with, so any assistance from the public that if they see it on the spot, if they can contact 911, that way, the officers can be dispatched, you know, at the time.
We do realize that. I don't want to interrupt you. We understand that, calling 911, and we've done that over and over again. I usually reserve 911 calls for like when he's taking a baseball bat to bash in a window on a car, or when he's chased a woman around cars at the end of school. I mean, the guy's getting worse. So I'd just like to have that as a favor to our community. I'm giving you a notice that this guy has been there for a long time, years. We all have had to deal with him. And it seems to be escalating. So I think as a community, we need to be aware of that, and we suggest sending someone out on the young people. To deal with him, he's around six o'clock at night, you see? Sometimes a little after. But he's pretty much there. You won't be able to miss him, I consider. Please take this as a, not as a like, we have to call you, but the time you did give is how you did in school.
Okay, sorry, sir. That last portion cut off. I don't know if it was just my audio, but I think I have the gist of what you had mentioned.
Thank you, Member Fox, and I will note this topic's come before with this individual several times over the past few years, so this isn't the first time this person's been brought up. I'll note real quick for Anson Wu at NCO, that member Bozo was present during the start of the meeting. She just got knocked off for a minute due to internet problems during grill calls, so please mark her as having been properly attending from the beginning, if you can. With that said, do we have any other raised hands from board members on HPD? If not, we'll go to community members, and I see a raised hand from Janelle. Janelle, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Janelle from Councilmember C's office. Lieutenant, if you want to give our office a call too, we have some additional background. We used to call him Ivan in the park, so he had a tiara because he was camped out by Vista Place. And since then, he's been more mobile, so we do have some more information if you want to give our office, reach out to our office.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember C's office, yeah.
Okay, do you have a direct contact number for you?
Yeah. It's the email is ckyse@HonoluluZaka.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Janelle. Do we have any other raised hands from board members or community members, or questions or comments to HPD? One once, going twice. Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you, Lieutenant, for your presentation, and have a good night.
Thanks.
We'll move on to Room Number 3, unfinished board business. Let me just check, is Michael He present? Michael He?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
All right, great. Yes, yes. I'm going to put your presentation up on the screen. Again, first, just to update people, there was a situation last month regarding potential rule violations or ethics violations on a couple agenda items. Long story short, I checked with both Ethics Commissions. They punted me to the Neighborhood Commission, and the Neighborhood Commission punted me to Lloyd Unanaka, who's the Executive Secretary of the Neighborhood Board System. And he gave me some definitive answers that there's no problem with those items on the agenda, so in the future, if there's complaints about rule violations, we're just going to run it by Lloyd, because that's apparently the person who has authority to make those calls. Yeah, so it's all good. We can go forward with the items.
Sorry. Point of order, Dave. I believe somebody at with Benson over at Kapal Amahale has their hands raised, I think, on this matter.
Sure, I'll take the raised hand, and then we'll go into
Okay, never mind. Oh, never mind, we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, so it would be permissible under the rules for us to do a resolution vote on Mr. Michael He's resolution. However, I talked to him, and long story short, some more detail shortly, but essentially, a resolution isn't necessary for the parking removal issue. We just need to do a presentation on it, so that's publicly acknowledged, and the public has notice of the proposed change. So we're going to get into that in just a second. First, though, I do want to give Michael He the opportunity to do a presentation on the issue, because he's emphasized to me that he and his family have dealt with safety-related issues because of his traffic and parking situation on that street, so I'm going to share the presentation on my screen, but it's Michael He's presentation, so I'll rely on him to walk us through it, and just let me know when you want me to go to the next page. All right, Michael?
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, I'll put it up on my screen in just a moment.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Okay. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Michael He, and you want me to go to the next page, just let me know.
Okay, so this is a proposal to create a no parking zone, Malka of my driveway at 2245 Oahu Avenue to the intersection of Kaala. This address a few of the consequences of the ongoing traffic problem for us. It allows my family, my wife and kids, to have a view corridor and increased maneuvering room when they enter or exit to busy Oahu Avenue. It'll allow cars turning right from Oahu Avenue onto Kaala to have a clear traffic lane. Further, it'll allow better visibility of pedestrians at the intersection. All of this would result from the removal of one legal parking space. Initially, to address this ask, I was initially instructed by DTS to get a petition signed with approval by at least 90% of my neighbors. DTS actually provided me with the sheet and the addresses, and at the end, I'll present the petition with 100% approval. I was further instructed by DTS to get the endorsement of this board, and after some controversy, was determined that this was not necessarily necessary, and thanks to Ms. Sparling from the Bear's Office, to determine that all that's required is an appearance and a presentation, and the given the opportunity for commentary in this forum. So here it is, next slide, please. Next slide. So this is my drawing, an illustration of the ask. You can see that Oahu Avenue runs horizontally. Kaala Avenue runs vertically. My address is at 2245 Oahu Avenue at the corner. The little round circle with the picture there shows the telephone pole with the no parking sign on it. So a legal parking space in Honolulu is 18 feet. Legally, there's also required is a four-foot buffer around driveways from the flare. Okay, so from the telephone pole to my driveway is 36 feet, leaving no buffer, hence only one vehicle is determined that legally to park there. So every weekday, a second car squeezes behind illegally parked vehicle encroaching on the driveway. This limits visibility and the ability to get out or get into our driveway with cars speeding down Oahu Avenue. And I'll elaborate more about the traffic conditions, because it's all in that context. Also, when a second car illegally squeezes behind the first on bin pickup days, there's some inconsiderate individuals that park it from the bins or actually move the bins into the middle of our driveway, which is very upsetting. Further, if a car parks in front of the legally parked car, it actually parks into the intersection, and it makes it very difficult to make that turn from Oahu Avenue onto Kaala. Even with that legally parked car during times of congestion, that turn is impeded by that legally parked car. So here, again, the ask is to make it a no parking zone affecting the area in the green square there. You see the green? Next slide, please, and that'll address the aforementioned problems. Okay, so I, not being too tech savvy, I asked my son to make it more real, so he got this from Google Earth, and he illustrated this. Again, the green square is to ask, propose no parking area. It eliminates one single 18-foot space. The small little white sedan is parked there now. You can see what happens when you put a full-size car behind that white sedan, and I have more pictures of this, but how difficult it is to see and get out of this, get out of the driveway, and the effects on the rubbish bin. You can also see what happens when a car parks in front of that legal space. Cars coming down Oahu Avenue from the left side to the right side, to want to make that turn onto Kaala are hindered by that car and really have to cross into other lane to uncommon traffic to make that, to make that turn. Even with that legally parked car there during times of congestion, that turn is very, very congested. So creating a no parking zone in this area is really consistent with other areas on Oahu Avenue. Whether it's by coincidence or by strategic design, with bus stops, fire hydrants, and some no parking signs, this kind of configuration to maintain this kind of corridor is seen on parts of Oahu Avenue. If you look across the street, that parallel intersection actually has a bus stop there. If you go further down, where Oahu meets Armstrong, there's bus stops on either side of the road, a fire hydrant, and on one corner, a no parking sign. On the intersection where Oahu meets University Avenue, on both sides of the road, there is a corridor made by bus stops, and where is, there is a possibility of parking on Oahu Avenue, or I think still Oahu, where East Manoa Road, there is a bus stop there also. Interestingly, if you look at the corner of where Oahu Avenue meets Kaala Way, which is actually across the street from my house, there is no bus stop or signage or fire hydrant. Well, there actually is a fire hydrant, but cars every single day park illegally encroaching on that intersection, and you know, just a snapshot of Google Earth, you can see that's true right here. All the cars are. Anyway, next slide, please. So, next slide. So by removing that one parking space and creating a no parking zone, the pros are, it, well, for me, it remedies the illegal encroachment onto my driveway at 2245 Oahu Avenue. Actually, the previous slide, yeah. Next slide. Actually, I'm on the previous slide. Nogaji?
Sorry about that. I think that's the right slide now.
One before. Yeah, okay, so resource line of sight that we would have to, traffic coming down Oahu Avenue, oh, actually, the one after that, the one after that. One more over. There we go. There we go. It allows access to trash collection on a consistent basis. It remedies the illegal encroachment onto the Oahu Kaala intersection, allows an unimpeded right of right turn from Oahu onto Kaala, and it allows for better visibility of pedestrian, all for getting rid of this one parking space. Okay, now we're on this slide, so you can see the encroachment into the driveway here. These are just, we have hundreds of these examples, but this is just, you know, some examples of, you know, what it's like getting out of the driveway when cars park into the, into our driveway. The one on the far right actually comes from the other side, but there's nothing we can do about that, and it is what it is. Next slide. Next slide. So they blocked the bins. Next slide. Next slide. We have a whole bunch of these, too. This is where the cars park in front of the, well, actually, one back. One back. This is where cars park in front of the legal parking space encroaching on the intersection. These examples aren't too bad, but one of the reasons why I wanted to show the top left-hand picture is that black car there is actually going the wrong way, and it took a convincing to convince that girl in that car that that was an illegal parking space. But you can see what a problem that is for cars making that right-hand turn, especially when the area is really congested. Okay, next slide. Next slide. So all of these have, all of this has to be taken into the context of the traffic issues on Oahu Avenue. They're actually really increasing. And this, this issue, you know, has, we haven't been able to bring attention for the, to this issue despite multiple attempts. So it's a traffic congestion, it's illegal parking, it's use of the wrong lane. People are forced to use the wrong lane because of the congestion and the way the cars approach on the intersection, and you know, for those who live in the area or know this area, you folks all know that these cars just speed down Oahu Avenue. Next slide. Okay, this happens every single day. This is the traffic going into mid-pack in the morning. Every single day, and this goes till about maybe 8, 9 o'clock, and you can see that legally parked car there, which is, I think, there or something. The difficulty that causes, even with this, I mean, this is where we see a lot of the cars going into the wrong lane, but every single weekday, this happens. And the bottom one's actually not even a bad, bad situation, morning and afternoon. Next slide. Illegal parking is rampant in the area. Cars routinely park in front of fire hydrants. I got this, the upper left-hand corner. That's just one example. If you look on the upper right-hand corner, that is the street going into mid-pack. There's no parking signs on both sides of the road. There's a fire hydrant there, yet cars are parked every single day up and down that road. The bottom left-hand corner is an example of a car encroaching on Kaala Way, one of those intersections where there is near the intersection and no signage, but this happens every single day. Interestingly, one of the top pictures on the right side shows the top part of Kaala Way, and Kaala Way is a one-way street going Diamond Head. This car is encroaching on the intersection, heading in the opposite direction. So people who are turning in from Kamehameha run into this car, and that happens every single day. Next slide. And because of this, cars are forced to use the wrong lane coming into incoming traffic, and these are various examples. We have tons of pictures of this, because it happens so often. It's very difficult to get a, you know, a snapshot of speeding, but I just used this one. This happened a couple weeks ago, where a car was coming down Oahu Avenue and got slammed by a car coming down Kaala Way. In this particular case, I don't think visibility was a problem, but look where that car ended, that little car ended up. You don't end up there from going this 25 mile an hour speed limit. You know, what I would recommend, this is the heart of the problem, and I would ask for this board and for representatives to encourage DTS and the police to consider, one, perhaps putting stop speed bumps strategically placed to stop speeding on Oahu Avenue. Maybe second, secondly, maybe we can consider the strategic placement of crosswalks on Oahu Avenue, I mean, darting out between the cars. Third, we can mark designated stalls. Fourth, if we could step up enforcement and maybe perhaps extend the area of coverage of that parking enforcement car that works down on University. And lastly, maybe set up a mechanism where there's a consistent way to work with the institutions in our area. You know, all this, this traffic is getting worse over the course of time. You know, the traffic and infrastructure really are the limits to development and how much density there can be. And you know, it's been specifically stated that a government leadership could really care less about the character of our neighborhood. And I think maintaining this character should be the primary focus of this board and our representatives. Next slide. Next slide. Jana Kachi, one more over, please. So this is my petition signed by 100% of the neighbors, as required by DTS, meeting their requirements. So with your consideration, I'd like to have these submitted into the minutes and open myself to any questions.
All right, thanks, Michael, and I apologize. I think my screen, your screen were out of sync a few times there, but it looks like you made it through. So I see a raised hand on the Anson Wu screen. Is that a board member?
Oh, yeah, Moylan.
Oh, remember, Moylan, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I understand that there is no need for board action in this tonight, especially because it concerns one single parking space, but I do want to suggest But I do want to suggest that the board may want to develop some action on what is clearly a much larger issue. The citizen speaks of the neighborhood character. One thing that's well known to drop. Housing values is a huge number of cars parked on the street. I'm amazed that in Honolulu, we don't seem to have the vision triangle requirement that many other cities have. Where it is illegal to park within twenty five or thirty feet of any intersection. That that is something that we might want to make as a general resolution that the city should adopt a vision triangle requirement. To address the safety issues that the speaker pointed out. But also. As the speaker acknowledges that our traffic is pretty bad around here, part of the reason it's so bad. Is because individuals are using the public right of way to store their vehicles. And one parked car kills an entire lane of traffic. I've been amazed since I moved here, how many times I'll be driving along. And all of a sudden, the lane I'm in ends because there's just a bunch of cars parked. And then they all have to squeeze over and merge over. Some cities have adopted code that says every land use is required to provide its own vehicle storage. And that nobody should presume the right to put their private vehicle on the public right of way. And that's something we ought to consider too. I think Honolulu would really benefit from it. So rather than deal with this one parking space, everything that was just shown in that presentation is a citywide problem. And it could be mitigated by A mandating the safety of vision triangles. And B by saying people can't presume to park in the street and have to park in their own garages. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Moyland. I'm going to go next to Member Diane Chong. Member Chong, please go ahead.
Hi, um. Problem is, it's not the the neighbors that are parking there, it's the UH students that park there. And because there's not enough parking in your parking lot and they charge a lot. That's the reason why they park on Oahu Avenue and also down into. That area where Saint Saint Francis School is. It has nothing to do with parking cars. People parking their cars on the street. It is the people, the students that are parking there. One thing I know you you wanted to suggest putting a bump. You know, I've heard of people. On the other side of the island say that when you do put that bump in. It makes a lot of noise because when they go over it, it causes a lot of noise. And that's another headache you might have to deal with. But. I understand what you're talking about the the area because I go through that area. When mid pack is starting school and there's a lot of cars there. I I think it's a good, it's a good idea to get rid of that parking space. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Chong. So we're going to go, uh. Member Bosol, then Member Fox, then Member Zane, and then Dylan Armstrong. So, uh, Member Bosso, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can I verify whether the curb is painted red in the areas that. Are outside of the legal parking spot?
There are areas in. In Manoa along Oahu Avenue where the curb is painted red. But I'm not sure if that's just residual red paint from before. Because I don't, I don't think DTS comes out and does that anymore. I noticed the bus stops are painted red.
So in front of.
It's not, I wanted to, I wanted to paint it red and it was painted red before I got there, but that paint is. No, kind of long gone, and I understand I can't repaint it.
Okay, so it's not painted red in front of your.
It's reddish, but.
It is.
It's not by, it's reddish, but not by, it's not by VTS approved. It's from a legacy thing.
I see, and that's on both sides of the parking spot, like your driveway side and the intersection side or no?
It's around my driveway side. How that no parking sign came to be on the. The telephone pole. Is really not clear to me. Because my my thought, well, as I recall before, that that parking sign was about four feet further back. On a pole. But at some point, I don't know what happened to that pole. I don't know if it got hit or hit. And then all of a sudden, I'd see it on that that telephone pole. But in either either case, both ties, we've been having this problem. I mean, this problem has been going on for a decade or or longer.
It is. Also, I did want to verify, it is supposed to be illegal to park within twenty feet of an intersection in all of Honolulu. That is a rule as far as.
It's the enforcement, it's the enforcement, that's the tough part.
But that is the, that is the law, I believe, just to Mr. Moyland's point or Member Moyland's point, so. Uh, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Member Bosso. We'll go now to Member Fox. Member Fox, please go ahead.
Thank you. I did go out to the area and there is residual red paint. About three feet on either side of. The driveway mention. It's really, really worn off, so you can't really see the red. But I'm going to presume it was given by the city. I don't know anybody else who would paint red as is appropriate. On the curb. Also. If I agree with Member Tong that student parking is our big problem here. And clearly, the university does not have adequate parking for all of the students going to school. We have cars parked in people's front yards all down Hyde Street. Uh, so it's pretty. Intense. Unfortunately, the trend in the city right now is to reduce parking, which I think is a mistake. Of course, their goal is that we're supposed to give up our cars. And we'll go electric or we'll go with mass transit, and unfortunately, that whole concept doesn't work that well. Because you have to have the transit first before you make people give up their transportation. How do you get to the doctor's office? How do you get to the grocery store? And unfortunately, I don't think we've had a really serious conversation in City Council about how to. Move forward with a greener solution. Clearly, the blowback in California is not good. And there's a lot of controversy and a lot of anger going on about that. I would suggest one thing that might be of assistance in that is we should have a garage inspection program. So many garages, carports are so stuffed with garbage that you do, there's more pressures. That you can't park a car in. And if you have a house that has a garage, I think you should use the garage for a car.
Robert.
What it's used as. So let's try that.
All right, thank you, Number Fox. I'll, I'll now go to Robert Zane, then Dylan Armstrong, and then I'll have, um. Member Watson do the last word on this. So, uh, Members Zane, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dan, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Really appreciate all the pictures, especially during the different times. Would. A movement of the no parking sign from the curb. To an area beyond your, past your. Driveway, do you think would that be sufficient or you need that to be moved further down? As one potential solution to this situation.
I think moving the parking sign next to my driveway, that that's what would create the no parking zone, you know, no parking from here to corner. If we moved it four feet in from the. From the pole towards my driveway, it may clarify. The eighteen foot that only one car can park there. The problem is, is it still doesn't solve the problem with illegal parking of people going in front of that car into the intersection and a car squeezing behind. And even that legal parking space by itself with the present congestion, cars have trouble making the turn. In the morning when the mid pack traffic is there, and to also to clarify is the parking is due to UH students. But it's also due to in large part to mid pack students.
And. I'm looking at the Google Maps picture of your address over here. There's a little bit of red, a little bit past your driveway. Is that still there in New, uh, so that the cars don't necessarily encroach on your ability to. Move out of the driveway. And you need to turn left towards the President's House, for example.
The primary thing is that if a car parks close to the driveway, in order to get out, you have to go really straight out. Right into into traffic to make to make that turn. If it's a big boxy car, it's difficult to see if someone parks there. But generally, you know, we have SUVs, so a lot of times we can see over it, but it's the the maneuvering ability that if someone boxes us in. Essentially, we're going straight out and and looking until, you know, our window passes that car, so we, you know. Slowly edge out. That's very difficult. I mean, if there wasn't that much traffic on Oahu Avenue, it wouldn't have been, wouldn't be much of a problem, or it wasn't as congested. But when cars speed down Oahu Avenue, they could be way down the street as we we edge out. So. And we can't see them.
And also, one last thing, if. If the no parking sign is moved over further downs that way, that eliminates the parking stall. Towards the entrance, towards the turn into Mid Pacific and goes beyond your driveway. Uh, would you be willing to cost, uh, to call the police multiple times on illegal parking there? Because it looked, you you point out, it is a safety by, uh, safety hazard, especially when you're trying to make that wide right turn. During the morning and afternoon traffics into and out of you, uh, Mid Pacific.
I don't, I don't think the parking sign can be moved further, further towards the intersection. Because I think as is, it's really marginal, being very close to the intersection.
No, 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 I'm not saying.
My driveway. Moving towards my driveway, right?
Yeah, right, right. Moving it back past your driveway, actually. Because there's a little bit of red beyond your driveway, but would you be, but would you be one of. Able or willing to like call the police multiple times to try to force, help them enforce that as well, or? I I know the, because it is, it does, it, based on your pictures, it is a safety concern. And you did point out that major accident did happen over there. So I'm just wondering if you, if you also be willing to help out the police calling out people who park over there. With the no parking signs moved beyond your, your past your driveway away from the intersection.
Well, if it, if it's, if you're talking about to the right of my driveway towards the call aside, I guess that would be the ask. Moving it to the, towards the other side of the driveway. That the car that parks there that encroaches isn't as much of a big deal. But my my other neighbor driveway is very, very close, so usually a car to kind of sneak in that area. And that's not as bad. It's this blocking of the intersection that's really bad because we can't see the cars coming down. Oahu. That's the main problem. So on one side, on the left hand side. You know, cars encroach, but it's not that bad. We can, we can, we can do, we can handle that. It's the the ones on the right hand side towards the intersection that makes it really tough.
Uh, but, um. I'm just trying to say that it's a community effort to also like help the police out when calling out. Drivers who are who are there, and especially if it's a recurring issue as opposed to a safety hazard. So. I know police can't be everywhere twenty four seven, but. Just trying to point out issues to them when these issues crop up, when. If the, if and when the change occurs to move the parking sign away from the intersect, a no parking area, expanding it beyond its location. And giving it more space away from the intersection. I think it would help out a lot.
I think, I think. You're right that it's a matter of enforcement. My wife calls the police almost every single day, and it really doesn't help the situation because cars get ticketed. And it doesn't modify behavior. And the next, the next student comes and parks here, the next student comes. It really doesn't do anything. That's true for the fire hydrants and parking into the intersections. They can be tagged every single day, but unless there is some signage. Or that's far from the intersection, nothing is going to be done. I mean, even parking to the bus stop. I mean, they don't care. They park right into the in front of the fire hydrants or on an unapproved sidewalks. On the other side of the fire hydrants. And and you only can call the police so so much. They have a lot more important things to do. So would you call them?
Right, okay. All right, and thank you for that, and thank you for helping to make our community a bit safer with your efforts. I'm ending my portion at this point, Chair.
Uh, thanks, Members Zane. Uh, so we're gonna have to have just two more people before we close discussion on this, which is first, um. Former Chair Dylan Armstrong, I saw your hand up, but did you still want to speak on this?
Yeah. Uh, yes, Chair Nagaji, and Aloha Mike Kako, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks for making the time to attend, but yeah, go ahead.
Happy to be here. Well, I should say I'm not here per se. I'm in Budapest, but it's no Manoa Valley, so. Manoa is a very special place. I wanted to say. I agree with all of Mr. He's observations as someone who lived in the upper part of Sub District Four formerly. And commuted by way of the bus. On Oahu Avenue, so I have very firsthand experience with these observations and I know how true they are. The range of political opinions in the conversation was a very good conversation. I don't agree with anyone one hundred percent, but it was a good conversation to have. I can make a very simple point. And then a practical point for the board. The simple point is. There's only one city in the United States that grew over the past decade when everywhere's been growing. Cost of living crisis everywhere. That's Seattle. That was able to grow without worsening congestion. How did they do it? They didn't take away parking from existing residents. But they stopped trying to provide parking for every new resident. So the operative phrase that Mr. He used and Mr. Fox referred to is modifying behavior. So rather than trying to change people's behavior, you get people who come in with no expectations. Or actually, those of us who've sacrificed and not contributed to congestion by not driving and not parking, get no thanks for that, but that's okay. That's where you get the savings, the space savings, the time savings when you travel. Enough of that point, though. Practical point for the board. You have your CIP season coming up. It was my biggest failure in my time on the board was we never pursued CIP. I know Scott Nishimoto, the incoming council member. I like Scott. He's a nice guy. I'm telling you, you're gonna have to push as a neighborhood to improve your infrastructure as a board. And be fair to all. Don't be favorites, you know, to certain residents that you know or like or trust more. Look at all of the infrastructure needs and get that CIP list of the neighborhoods' needs ready. So that in January, February at the latest, you've got something for the city council to push on. Don't expect Councilmember Nishimoto or Councilmember Say or any politician to do all of that work for you, and it's a huge area where you can help. Thank you for your patience in listening. Mahalo.
Thank you, uh, former Chair Armstrong, and our last person on this issue is going to be Member Watson. Watson, if you fix your audio issue, please go ahead.
Thank you. You can hear me, okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Thank you. But yeah, my, my question is, or I guess, Mr. He, and maybe you've addressed this, but. You always need a paper trail, so. I know it's just humbug to think these people get parking tickets. Probably the same people don't park there, right? Or or I think you need to find out how many people are really actually blocking a fire hydrant or blocking. The intersection that we're towed, that we're actually towed. Because it is my understanding. That if you park in front of a fire hydrant, they won't just ticket you, they'll haul you out of there. So. Um, I think that you need to talk to, Manoa has their community policing team. And get some stats on your side of why. This is a kind of an extraordinary problem for your house location. As opposed to all of the other neighbors that that are maybe. Just tolerated or they're they're okay with it and. Parking really is a problem in Honolulu and Woodlawn Drive. If you want to park there and go to a meeting at the Manoa Innovation Center. You can park along Woodlawn Drive as long as you're deeper in the valley than Lowry. There's no parking at all along there. It's bumper to bumper to bumper. Or you look at Doe Street through campus, it's just wall to wall park cars. And along Woodlawn is faculty housing town, like townhouses, right? And so they get maybe one parking stall and their spouse or other. Others in their family park on Woodlawn. You you just cannot park on. Would never try to park on Woodlawn. It's just never going to happen in the traffic in the parking along East Manoa. Or along Lowry Street. And then you have to. And then you have to wait and then go through. I mean, at least your street each side is a lane and a half wide so that you can keep going if you're going down to Wahoo Avenue as opposed to like Lowry Street where you, you can't drive all the way through like Mr. Moyleman was saying and, and on any streets, on, on my street, on all streets and it, parking is just really an issue on Oahu. And they just keep wanting to build more condos with no parking and it's just gonna make congestion worse like they're building that uh twenty-three story condo on a little tiny property on Old Wildi Avenue that isn't even as big as your property or your yard. And yet City Council is gonna let that be. So it's really a problem, my heart goes out to you. But anyway, a paper trail, I, I think in statistics is the way to go, but that's just my two cents.
All right, thank you, Member Watson. Uh, we're moving on to the next item now, that's item uh three B. Acknowledgment of Michael He's Parking Removal Survey with one hundred percent agreement of signatories. Uh, as Michael mentioned during his PowerPoint, uh the survey that he had to get filled out made it sound like our board needs to send the completed form to DTS, which is why we thought we needed a resolution. But um Kim Sparland from the Mayor's Office did some digging and it turns out that information is outdated. Our board doesn't actually need to send the thing to DTS. We just need to present it at the board so that there's public notice of the change and then have the fact that we've presented it put into our official records at that being our minutes. So I'm just gonna show the um completed survey that um Michael He got finished. And then we'll ask um Anson to make sure it's noted in our minutes and that should satisfy the requirements for Mr. He to move forward with this um, with this item. So I'll share my screen in just a moment. All right, uh can you see my screen, everyone? So at the top, it says parking. Uh, we, the undersign, have read and understand the information printed below concerning changes to the traffic controls. Responses given next to our signatures indicate a position regarding these changes. Restricting parking on the Coco Head side of Oahu Avenue from the driveway of two-two-four-five Oahu Avenue to Kaala Street. Please circulate the survey to all the residents slash property owners on both sides of Oahu Avenue slash Kaala Way slash Kaala Place. This survey uh with the goal of nine percent favorable response should be submitted to the Department of Transportation Services through the Manoa Neighborhood Board. While support of the neighborhood board does not guarantee that the requested changes will be implemented. We find it, it the best form for neighbors to express their viewpoints regarding parking issues. And again, uh per came from uh the Mayor's Office, those last couple sentences, we can disregard. We don't actually need to send it, we just need to present to everyone so that everyone has noticed that this is um potentially happening. So there's a, there's ten uh spaces on the sheet. Uh, written on at the bottom. Uh, as you can see, all of them have the person's name and signature. All of them, the yes box has been checked, so ten people who are um on streets that will be impacted by this parking change indicate approval. We have given a proper notice to the community that uh Mr. He filled out this sheet. And I'm now asking Anson to make sure it's noted in the minutes, to make sure it's all official and that Mr. He satisfies the requirements. So with that done, I don't think we need to discuss it anymore because we just um discussed the same issue last item. But do we have any um comments or questions on this before we move on? One, once.
Aloha Chair Nagaji. Aloha.
Yes, please go ahead.
This is Pooh from Councilmember Say's office, I just wanted to uh make a comment. Um, so June He actually uh called into our office and she emailed us in regards to the same area, the intersection area. So I just wanted to up you, update you guys that um I did speak with June He and I did um submit a riser, um which is a request for investigative services to the Department of Transportation for traffic study to be done to install the crosswalks throughout the intersection of Kaala Way, Kaala Street and Wahoo Street to make it, to mitigate school traffic concerns. So I just wanted to give you guys an update, that was part of my report today, but I just wanted to let you know since we're on this topic. Mahalo.
All right, thank you, Pooh. Uh, and I'll just ask real quick, I remember Watson, you emailed me the other day and we didn't have time to get this on the agenda. But you wanted to send a letter to DTS asking them to change the uh form language to make it clear that we don't need to uh send it as, or we just need to present it. So you still want that for uh next meeting's agenda, Member Watson?
Yes, I think that we not even have to be in that process. Officially written on any forum and Tom Heinrich advised me to call um uh the managing director for me. Um, and he never returned my call uh so that I didn't know how we would make that request. So I think that uh perhaps you, Chair, if the board does not object, should write a letter asking DTS to change their paragraph and not make it mandatory that the board hear it and put it in our minutes and stuff to facilitate DTS. DTS gives them the survey. Um, they get it filled out, they submit it back to DTS. It's, it's one thing to come to the neighborhood board and talk about traffic and parking and, and things in a broader sense. But I don't wanna have to be part of the process for the Department of Transportation Services for the city and county of Honolulu. I don't think, not only Manoa Board, but all seventeen boards shouldn't have to be in that business. But certainly, a resident that has a concern can come to the board and share at any time, whether it's one resident or a handful or a hundred. But I just don't wanna formally be stuck in there on some administrative form from a city department. So yeah, I think we should send that letter.
All right, fair enough. Uh, I, I can, I'm not gonna make it long, just make it like half a page, one page. Uh, does anyone, Member Watson, Member Fukamoto, anyone else want to uh read through my letter? And uh make sure it's all good before we put it on the agenda, do we have a co-drafter for this?
Elton, you wanna review that?
Member Fukamoto has a hand raised, please go ahead.
Yes, Chair, I'll help you.
All right, sounds good. Uh, yep, I'll uh follow up with Member Fukamoto outside meeting and if all goes well, we'll get on the agenda for um for November. All right, any um last?
Chair, if I could ask, please?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like us, since we've spent and our first hour of the meeting on this issue and we have the pickleball issue, which has a lot of testifiers probably for it. The, the board really needs to do um six and seven on your agenda. You stuck them at the bottom and that's really board business that we have to do as a board. It's what we need to do. And so I wonder if you could entertain um us having the Noalani School meeting location on Wednesday and having it start a half an hour earlier and go for two and a half hours till nine o'clock and we're out the door. And we can have a hybrid meeting there. And I think that if our board wants to do that, we can just decide to do that. And then Anson can follow up with getting the proper paperwork with Noalani. By December, we can have an, by November, we can have an in-person meeting. And the way it's on the agenda now, we won't even get to it in this meeting. And we'll run out of time and then we're power again. So I'd like to move it up.
So I, I, because.
Do that something the board has to do.
Because I think a lot of people are here for the pickleball thing. I prefer to do the pickleball thing first and then we can skip over the other items to the, to items uh six and seven, is that okay?
Well, I'm wanting the board to make a vote or a decision on whether we wanna move up a half an hour meeting time and cut it from three hours to two and a half and have an in-person meeting at Noalani. It should probably be a no-brainer uh for this board to do that.
Because we're running low on time, Member Watson, you can make the motion. If we get a second, we'll just do a vote to move those items forward. No, Watson, do you wanna make a motion to move forward with item six and seven?
Chair, Chair, we need, in order.
Yeah, Anson, sorry, Anson's talking, Anson, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. In order to change the agenda, we need a two-thirds mul- of votes, so we need like twelve members have to be present and the cameras have to be on.
We're not, we're not adding to the agenda, we're just moving it up.
You're, you're changing, you're still changing the agenda, we still, we have to.
Do that all the time, Anson.
Okay, we're wasting time, we're just gonna move forward with the, with the agenda as is. And then after this, we'll get to those items in six and seven. Okay, um, so Ed Suarez, are you on? Ed Suarez?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm gonna share the pickleball presentation you, you uh sent me, this is item three, see on the agenda. Uh, presentation pickleball noise concerns at Midwood District Park, Ed Suarez. So I'll do the same thing as last time, I'll put the thing up, you, let me know when to go to the next slide, okay?
Yeah, thanks. There's just a few slides, really. You know, last time I was here, I presented a lot of scientific backing and basis for the need to protect nearby homeowners from the damaging effects of noise pollution from pickleball. Um, and in that presentation, oh, sorry, Dave, are you, oh, there you go. Oh, is this not the one with the, the photo? Yeah, um, yeah, in that presentation, uh you know, the science really speaks for itself uh in Manoa in particular. The pickleball court cannot feasibly be made to come in compliance with international and state um noise ordinances and noise regulations of fifty-five decibels and unless it was somehow moved four hundred and forty feet away from the nearest home and supplied and surrounded by the highest density, most powerful noise absorbing panels available. So that's a bare minimum, four hundred and forty feet plus extensive and expensive sound mitigation. If, if you were to play pickleball there, that would be the only fair way to treat the residents surrounding that area. Um, for those who aren't familiar, I um and said, come and mode help me with that picture. Um, if, I wanted to go back to the picture, actually. The picture shows, you know, with concentric rings, you know, in the middle is the, the tennis and pickleball courts. The pickleball courts are closer to the pool, um closer to the school side. That's Manoa Elementary there where the three hundred um ends on the right side of the pickleball courts. That's also too close for students to be, this kind of noise on a daily basis, nine hundred times an hour, ten thousand times a day, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand times a month, um violating the noise ordinance um and impeding their learning. Yeah, on the opposite side of the court, you've got residents as close as a hundred feet from the nearest tennis court. There's no jurisdiction in the country that allows pickleball to be played that close to anyone's home. It's, it's just out and out banned up to seven hundred and fifty feet. Um, this is all stuff I presented last time, I just wanted to kind of recap that, that it's nothing like tennis. It's seven to eight times louder than tennis, uh seven hundred to eight hundred times more intense than tennis. Travels a mile in every direction. As you can talk to neighbors who, who are out these outside, outside these lines, uh up at the top of Huelani Place. You know, fifteen hundred feet away, they hear it. Uh, on Lowry, they hear it eighteen hundred feet away. It travels very far, farther than typical kinds of sound, it's an impulsive noise. And it's more like a, a shooting range, a firing range. Um, and it's even has, because it's unpredictable and uncontrollable, has more in common with techniques of noise torture. And you know, I'm living proof of this, my neighbors are living proof of this. We know how this feels to hear this impulsive noise, it's like a hundred and twenty decibels and has the high frequency of a ambulance siren. It, it just autonomically, automatically shoots up your blood pressure and releases stress hormones like a fight or flight response. It's a terrible way to live. It's, it's a hell, it's a nightmare, actually, to try to go out on your, on the eye and enjoy a quiet evening, which we used to always be able to do with tennis and basketball going full force. Now that's impossible and it's been impossible for two years. And for two years, we've been just dismissed and, and led around and bounced around ironically, not unlike a pickleball. Um, from agency to agency, we were told to go to DOH, DOH said, we can't help you do it. Go to HPD, HPD says, we don't have sound meters, we can't measure it, even though it's probably a violation. That's so frustrating and this is our last resort. Um, you know, and, and with, without some assistance here, it's gonna end up in a lawsuit like it's done in, in so many other places. I'm just hope that we can avoid that. This is nothing against pickleball or pickleball players, it's a wonderful sport, they're happy. I want them to play, but the, the parks just has not done its due diligence to, to study this matter and to provide appropriate spaces for pickleball to be played. Manoa is not appropriate. Um, the only possible location, if you're still on this photo here, would be just behind the old gym, the big white diagonal roof um and near the pool. That is approximately five hundred feet from the nearest residents on either side. That's a possibility, I know a member brought that up last time, like, does this mean you can't play pickleball in Manoa? I don't know, that's really up to parks to do its due diligence, but when I looked at the Google Maps.
Oh, uh, just a time, uh ju- just try to wrap it up in another five minutes if you can, just because we're gonna need, need to discover the issue as well, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Um, you know, and I, I was mentioning the stress response that it creates. I, I, I wanna also reference a World Health Organization study that looked at chronic exposure to anything above fifty-three decibels um leading to uh ten percent increase in risk of heart disease, stroke and premature death for every five decibels over that number. That means at twenty decibels over that number. Now my risk of dying prematurely from stroke or heart disease is forty percent higher thanks to this noise pollution that's been unchecked and, and undoubted and improperly allowed to happen. Um, so yeah, I'm angry, I'm, I'm desperate. Uh, I need your help. This is the last resort. Beautiful place we live in. And it's not just beautiful because of the visual scenery, it's beautiful because the soundscape as well. And you know, these kinds of sounds like leaf blowers at eighty to ninety decibels, um roosters, feral roosters crowing at a hundred and twenty decibels. And you know, this also at a similar level. These are, these are ugly sounds and they're spoiling our, our soundscape, which also ruins the quality of life and enjoyment of living in this beautiful place. We have an ordinance that deals with this kind of noise as, if it's coming from a dog. A dog barks at about ninety decibels and it's not allowed to bark for more than ten minutes. At, at that point, it becomes a violation. And yet this is much louder and is allowed to go on fifteen hours a day, every day for years. Help me make sense of this, it's, I know we're just a minority, you've got probably lots of pickleball players out there wanting to jump all over this and me. And that's happened in other places and I, and don't even want my face out there because of that. But I have no other choice, I know I'm gonna be reviled. Um, but this is for my health and I have to do this and I need your help. So I'll just wrap it up there and um take any questions or comments.
All right, thank you, Ed. Uh, so I'm gonna ask um Vice Chair Zan to strictly maintain the one minute time limit, just so that we have time for discussion here. Um, yeah, so thi- this is discussing the presentation. And after we discuss presentation, we will have the opportunity to do a motion to vote on the resolution if members want to. So I'll go first to uh Member Robert Zan, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I believe members of the board were also contacted by the Department of Park and Recreation, uh Parks Recreation regarding um a statement they made to KITV regarding this issue um that they conducted a sound study in June of twenty twenty-four that determined that the sound generated by the court users, park staff and other ambient sound in the area near the courts did not exceed ocean levels of concern that determined that the sound generated by the court users, park staff, and other ambient sound in the area near the courts did not exceed ocean levels of concern, and that they plan on planting approximately fifty-five trees to help buffer the sound from the outdoor courts in this area. Um, I just wanted to check in with the presenter to see if he was aware of this as, as well as if, um, if he has any comments regarding the sound study by the Parks and Recreation on this matter.
Yeah, and I, and I did send several bullet points, um, to be shared with the board after they got that very misleading statement and sound study from the Department of Parks and Recreation. It was not done by professional sound engineer, it was done by a backwards level safety specialist with DPR. Um, that wasn't using professional or accurate equipment, it didn't follow ANSI standards for measuring this kind of impulsive noise. It sorely underestimated the, the actual level of noise, um, as an impulsive noise, and, um, there's, there's no way you can actually mitigate that level of noise, um, from in that situation. And that study does absolutely nothing, in particular, because they're referencing OSHA standards. OSHA, this is workplace, indoor workplace standards to prevent hearing damage and loss of their employees. Okay, I'm not their employee, this is totally irrelevant. It's good if they did that to protect their employees, but it says nothing about the environmental noise pollution that's impairing our quality of lives around the park. And, and OSHA itself, self, this kind of information and, and warning, do not use OSHA standards to address environmental noise pollution, and I shared this with them, and they continue to promote this lie, and it's, it's really frustrating. And it's really, it's like they're weaponizing this kind of incompetence, um, against their neighbors, it's really unfair. Um, that study is completely irrelevant to this matter, I presented the actual facts and from sound engineers that have studied this for years, we don't have to, you know, go back to reinventing the wheel here and, and making all the same mistakes that other places have made by doing the same thing that Parks is doing right now.
All right, thank you, uh, Member Zane and Ed, I'm gonna go to Member Watson, and then whoever's on Anson Woo's screen, uh, Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Suarez, I, I agree that, um, that you believe that all of the data you have presented, um, shows, you believe that it shows that pickleball is hazardous to your health. And that's fine, and so I encourage you that you need to protect yourself. So you need to perhaps get noise canceling headphones or change the kind of windows in your home, or put up a rock wall or some kind of sound buffeting thing because you live by the park, so there's a lot of noise at that park. There are aluminum bats for baseball, and right now we got all the football players and all kinds of stuff happening there, and kids at A+ and screaming at recess, and I get it. And tennis and pickleball, but we can only, I think our state officials and people can only go by what is in Hawaii revised statutes, and the Department of Health says that eighty-five decibels for an eight-hour continuous period of time is not okay and against the law, and if it's less than that, it's okay, I mean, that's just how the statute reads, and so the Department of Health is gonna go with that in the Parks and Recs, so what I'm saying is that it really bothersome to you, so I encourage you to do something for you, to take care of you, um, in this process, it's just like firecrackers and sulfur smoke are a problem for me, so I shut the windows and I have a bedroom air conditioner and I close it down and I have to tolerate it because the city likes firecrackers for everybody, so it's really hard for me but I do, I do what I can to take care of myself, so I would just encourage you to do that, thank you.
Could I respond to that, please?
Thirty-second response, go.
Um, this is nothing like tennis, basketball, volleyball, or anything that's played in the park or down in the park. I tried to make that really clear. This is eight times louder than tennis. Tennis doesn't violate any noise ordinance or, or public health rules or regulations. Neither is basketball or volleyball. Pickleball does, it's many hundred times more intense.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor Watson, and thank you, Ed, I'm next gonna go to Anson Woo's screen, is that Member Moyland with his hand up?
Yeah, what's Moyland?
Sorry, please go ahead, Member Moyland.
It's my understanding that the only actual measurement anyone has made at our park is the Parks and Rec measurement of sixty-one DBs, is that correct?
No, I've made measurements using the correct form, you know, formula. Um, it's, it's seventy-three decibels, just like anywhere else in the country where they've measured it, it's above seventy decibels, two hundred to three hundred feet away. It's consistent.
The city code has eighty-five as the limit, does it not? You argue in your document that it should be fifty-five, but the city code actually is eighty-five, right?
No, you, the city code says that no one shall make noise above eighty decibels or eighty-five decibels for, uh, you know, five minutes cumulatively. And if they do, it, that activity needs to be permitted by the parks. So pickleball, we know, is eighty to a hundred and twenty decibels at the source, so it's a foregone conclusion that that is met, that that is in violation of that ordinance. But you can't get anyone out there, like the police, to actually measure it, they don't have sound meters. So, okay, it's impossible to actually enforce that, even though it is in violation.
The last thing, we have another citizen here who has a packet full of information. One thing of which is a photo of a sign that was put on the post purporting to be from the city and county of Honolulu saying pickleball play exceeds the maximum allowable noise level, contrary to what the city staff is telling us, saying therefore we ask that you, you know, play indoors or go use special quiet paddles or balls, and, you know, help us, thank you for helping us be respectful to our neighbors and avoid HPD involvement. Do you know anything about the appearance of this poster?
No, but it's absolutely correct.
Well, not according to the city staff, it isn't, someone was putting up an illegal sign purporting to represent them and telling people that pickleball exceeds the city ordinances, which the city says it doesn't.
The parks said they were gonna put up signs doing just that, I talked to the park director, she said she was gonna put up signs just like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go next to, uh, Member Fox, Member Fox, please go ahead.
Had to unmute there for a minute. So, um, I was interested in this, so I did look at the ordinance that the city, uh, in County of Honolulu has. There is an eighty-five, uh, decibel limit that was mostly designed for amplified noise. And that was for sound events, for instance, we have like movies on the beach at, um, Tohio Beach. And the eighty-five decibels refers mostly to, almost specifically to amplified sound. Uh, that's because we have events throughout the city and county of Honolulu. However, when I took a look at the, um, subcontracted decibel registry that they had, I noticed that the decibel machines that they used were not adequate. Um, in the city of Long Beach, we had to do monitoring of decibel level for amplified sound, for instance, and you have to have a PCE eight-eight-three machine in order to make an adequate registry of the noise. It seems that the subcontract did not have anything similar to a stationary uh, amplification sound detection machine, they had a handheld two-two-one, I think, at best. Um, see, it's sort of comparing apples against oranges, which I don't think is particularly fair. Um, I would suggest that if the city is going to make a statement about whether this exceeded or didn't exceed uh, noise levels, they at least have to have a subcontract that has the adequate machine to make a registry, which would be fair and just. So I'm not saying I know what the decibel level is, but I think the city has to go back to the table and make the correct uh, designation of machine to make that, um, uh, statement.
Robert, okay.
All right, thank you, Member Fox, um, I don't see any other raised hands from board members, so open up the public now, uh, I see raised hand from Harvey Arkin, Mr. Arkin, please go ahead. Mr. Arkin, are you there? Okay, we'll, we'll come back to you, uh, I see a raised hand on Anson Woo's screen. Uh, yes, I can't see.
So I would like to point out that, uh, one of the important legal, uh, ideas is called coming to a situation with clean hands. And it feels to me like Ed is without clean hands at all because I'm sitting here at the pickleball courts and there is no way this noise is a hundred and twenty DBs, I used to play in a band, I know what loud music is, I know what these sounds are, so his numbers, the hundred thousand, you know, pings a, a night, a, a day is a ridiculous statement, that doesn't happen, nobody plays during the middle of the day. A few people play Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings for a couple hours, and then the rest of the time, the place is empty until four to five o'clock, and they played at eight to nine. And we're sitting here, and if it was as loud as Ed said, my ears would hurt. My ears do not hurt. It's nowhere nearly noisy enough, and there's two courts of pickleball, so his, he has, you know, he's made up all sorts of numbers and, you know, his, his stuff is just ridiculous. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Arkin, uh, I'm now gonna go to, uh, whoever's over at Kapla Mahali with Anson Woo, uh, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, this is Danny King.
Sorry, could I respond to some of those mischaracterizations?
Uh, let's let the people go, and then you can respond to all of them at once.
Thanks.
Please go ahead.
Ball Association. Yeah, I'd like to see the, the study that Ed did, remember now, you can't, you can't do anything without facts on paper. Um, according to, um, this eleven dash forty-six dash four maximum permissible sound levels in dBs. See, noise level shall not exceed maximum permissible sound levels for more than ten percent of the time within any twenty-minute period. But that means two minutes of loudness in twenty minutes, so when the pickleball goes that's half a second. Puck, it's another half a second. Puck, it's another half a second. You gotta have more than two minutes within a twenty-minute period for it to be over the maximum permissible. And then if it is an impulsive noise, it can be ten dB above the maximum permissible. So we're looking at more than sixty-five dB. Um, and so I got other things, but I'll let other people talk.
Okay, thank you, uh, is there anyone else at Kapla Mahali who would like to talk at this time?
Uh, I think, yeah, we have one more.
All right, please go ahead.
Hello, Board Chair Nagachi and members of the Neighborhood, Manoa Neighborhood Board, my name is Norman Kau, coming from forty-year resident of Manoa Valley, I have provided written testimony and examples of some of the information related to my testimony, including a copy of the sign that was deemed illegal by the Department of Parks and Recreation Director of Manoa Park, she immediately took the sign down after being notified. Number one, home values are not negatively impacted by being close to pickleball courts pursuant to Mr. Suarez. Case in point, public records show that thirty-fourty-one A Manoa Road sold in twenty twenty-three and is approximately one hundred yards from the pickleball courts and is increased in value, so public records, two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars over, uh, since twenty twenty-two, which is twenty percent, um, all of our pickleball courts have been there. Apparently, um, there has been no decibel reading studies that have been in people's homes. Problem with that is that the sounds will come from kids laughing, balls bouncing, volleyball barking, dogs barking, there are no, um, decibel level reading materials or information that I'm aware of that deciphers what that sound is. So at eighty to a hundred twenty decibels at the source pursuant to Mr. Suarez, that sound is severely dissipated the farther away you go, he likens the sound to a gunshot, a gunshot according to noise, noise awareness, uh, nine-kilometer handgun is a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty-five decibels. Finally, as we, Sir, um, Moyer said, um, illegal pickleball signs in Manoa District Park. Two illegal signs were recently posted adjacent to the pickleball courts indicating HPD intervention by playing pickleball. These signs indicated they were from the city and county of Honolulu, they were not. The director of the Manoa District Park immediately removed them and noted that they were illegal, this is a misdemeanor offense, um, whoever.
Chair, uh, Speaker, your time is up, Chair, if, um, at your discretion, if you would like to continue or to cease at this moment.
Um, sure, just wrap that real quick.
Okay.
So thank you very much for this opportunity to, um, discuss my concerns, I represent over three hundred people. Uh, but once again, I live in Manoa, so I'm very concerned about this issue. Um, I do have a written testimony for your disposal, and if you would like to call me, uh, please do so, my number and name and email is on there. And finally, Mr. Suarez, I would love to introduce you to the wonderful value of pickleball, it increases, uh, um, endorphins, it creates a lot of social interactions, which you are a professional in the psychological arena, helps patients with depression and anxiety, pickleball has been named as the number one sport in the United States to help in those areas, thank you very much.
Uh, we also have one more person here.
All right, uh, they, they can go, and then we'll have Ed respond if he wants to respond, uh, yeah, but, uh, please go ahead.
Eric, hi, my name is Alex Bergano, I'm also a resident of Manoa for ten years. And I'm a pickleball player, and we know that Manoa rains a lot, so I don't know how Mr. Suarez got his numbers because a bunch of times I go to Manoa to maybe try to play pickleball, and it's raining, it's raining, pickleball doesn't work either, so I just wanna have that, you gotta take into account the rains and the days that people can't play, um, that's all I'm saying, thanks.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ed, you can respond to everyone, I'm gonna hold each of the one minute limit, but you can respond to everything that the past four or five people have said, if you want to.
Okay, regarding rain, I wish that was true, but pickleball, they're able to play right through the rain, and they often do. So that's not true what you're saying, I've witnessed it many, many times, we pray for rain. Um, but it actually doesn't always stop people from playing, especially the light rain that typically get here. Um, and so, you know, I think it's kind of the frequency issue, it is every day, it is played every day, it is unpredictable, it could be six AM, it could be twelve PM, it could be all the way till ten PM, I'm not saying it is fifteen hours a day, I'm saying it's up to fifteen hours a day, but it is every day, and it is many hours per day, and it is very intrusive, so it, it's nine hundred shots per hour in one match. That's the average, that's what I'm quoting, that's what sound engineers, that's what everyone across the country agrees on. And so you just do the math, it's, it's, people are playing five hours a day, that's forty-five hundred shots a day, just from one match. That's four, forty-five hundred cracks that increase our blood pressure and then send stress hormones flying, so that's the fact.
Sorry, I gotta cut you off for time, I gotta cut you off for time.
No, I really need to answer, and you really need to just go over some of the other things that were said there, because it's so untrue. And, you know, I know people want to see the facts and the data and, and a measurement, you've got the county measurement, it was, you know, obviously underestimating things. But all you had to do was look at some of the information I sent, look at the videos, it's, it's well-known, pickleball, every consultant will tell you, it's eighty to a hundred and twenty decibels at the source. Okay, so the time duration, you know, that you're quoting all these ordinances, those are ordinances made well before pickleball. These are ordinances made in the nineties, even before there were standards for measuring the pulse of noise. The, the standards, the ordinances we have are wholly obsolete, terribly ineffective. And we have to actually come up with something different that's gonna actually address this particular issue that's never been dealt with before. All right, and home values? There's really no evidence, you know, just because the, the values are continued to be calculated by the city and county. Of course, they're gonna keep going up because everyone's values are going up. But when people across the country try to sell a home that's within three hundred feet of a pickleball court, they're running into major problems and taking like thirty to fifty percent even losses.
You gotta stop your thanks. Okay. Um, so I'm just gonna call in two more people, which is, uh, Manoa and, um, old lady pickleball player. And then I'm just gonna call in one more person if they're available. And then we're gonna move on. So, uh, Manoa Benda, please go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm a Manoa resident. I use Manoa District Park all the time. I'm in and out many times during the day and I absolutely know that pickleball is not played all day long there. So I know, Ed, Ed, I appreciate that you're having problems with these sounds from the pickleball. But some of the things you're quoting are from like pickleball tournaments that are, these are like professional players that go bang, 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 back and forth. But most of us are older adults. We're out there for a little bit of exercise and fun. And we're getting physical exercise, mental exercise, and our balls go dink, hit into the net. Then we go pick the ball up and then we serve it. We serve it out of the court. It's a little bunk. So, you know, when you're talking about comparing professional pickleball players that are the kind of sounds and some of the videos that you've posted are like from pickleball tournaments. And we are just recreational players. You know, I have a right to enjoy my park also. It benefits my health to be able to be out there, enjoy my friends, get, it's a wonderful sport for all generations to play, especially older adults. So I really feel like you're telling me that I can't play pickleball at my park that you're picking on a lot of older adults who are the ones that play during the day. So that's my comment. And if this comes to a resolution, I ask the board to please vote no. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Sorry, we're running low on time. I'm just gonna move, move to the next person and then there might be a little bit of time for you to do a quick response at the very end. Um, old lady pickleball player, please go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Uh, for in the future, uh, I think it might be best for people to, since this is a public thing, it'll be on, um, O'Leilow as well as broadcasted. If people could have their real names mentioned as well. And not just, um, pseudonyms.
All right, uh, thank, thanks, Pastor Zane. Real names are preferred by this point, uh. It's too late to give the, uh, request, so we're going forward with it. So, uh, please go ahead.
My name is Carmela Tefoya. I'm a fifteen-year resident of Manoa. The Mayo Clinic study notably found that playing pickleball increased the expect, expect, expense expectancy of participants by between six and ten years. We are talking about an issue that you mentioned when this meeting opened, a board considering the entire community. And we did not, as pickleball players, have an opportunity to, to even know that this had come up, except for seeing an illegal sign posted about five weeks ago at the Manoa Courts. We have and respectfully request the opportunity to have the time for all parties to be interviewed and/or considered. And I respectfully ask that this board vote no on tonight's resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so real quick, a community member texted me and let me know that, um, people are saying some stuff in the chat that's not super great. Um, I don't really follow it, the, 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 the text chat during meetings because it's kind of too much for me, but, uh, you know, don't make personal attacks. Please just try to, you know, try to be nice. Um, anyway. Um, so I'm gonna ask if there's, uh, if, um, Director Thielen from the Department of, um, Parks and Recreation is here, or if there's a person from Parks and Rec who can, um, represent, uh, Laura Thielen from the department, just because she was involved in some, in some of the discussions on this and if, if she's here, it might be, uh, hopeful. So i- is, um, Director Thielen from Parks and Rec or someone on her behalf available? Going once? Going twice? Okay, so I'll, I'll just briefly share, um, that she was included in, in this discussion and she, she CC'd me or forwarded me on one of the things she wrote to Mr. Suarez. Um, similar to what the testimony said, she, um, was not supportive of putting up a three hundred fifty or five hundred foot ban, ban of pickleball near residences. And notably, she wrote in the email, may I offer an alternative salute? Waves, Urban Forestry Division can work with you to plant a tree between your house and the courts. We have to determine if it is possible, as I do not know where your home is located and what improvements are nearby. But if this is an option you'd like to pursue, please let me know. You're also free to approach the Department of Health authorities to lodge a complaint against the activities violating noise statutes. Um, I'm not an expert and I'm not going to engage in discussion on interpreting statute. And then she kind of just went on and talked about statutory interpretation, but the point is she, she's made an offer that she's going to find some kind of accommodations because I think that she and her department are sympathetic to, uh, Mr. Suarez's situation. So, you know, if we don't pass a resolution tonight, Mr. Suarez, please follow up with, um, Director Thielen. I'll help you do that and also with other, um, electeds or appointed government people and we'll try to get something, um, get something done since you have this problem that's been bothering you. Um, so with that, I'm gonna just give Ed one minute to respond to anything that's been said in the past ten minutes and then we're gonna move on to the next item and ask if the board wants to entertain a vote on the resolution. So, uh, Mr. Suarez, please go ahead. One minute.
Okay, um, yeah, the, that was a nice offer, um, to plant some trees, but, you know, I've done my research for the past two years. I've looked at residence. There's no situation where any kind of planting or trees has noticeably changed the noise decibels coming from pickleball into the neighborhood. And like I mentioned, you'd need like the highest density, strongest noise barriers to at four hundred and forty feet in this particular situation where we're at in Manoa to actually bring the noise level down to a, a reasonable level of fifty-five decibels from seventy, which is like living next to a freeway or having a vacuum being constantly turned off and on. Um, so I do appreciate the offer, but trees is not a solution. Um, I never argued anything about this being a bad sport or bad for people's health. It's great for people's health. I fully acknowledge that. Parks needs to do a better job of providing healthy places for you to play that aren't unhealthy for the people that live there. Um,
Sorry, I gotta, I gotta cut you off for time.
The last one is the old, older folks playing. Yes, that is true. Much, much of the morning is older folks and many, many of their shots are dinks that don't rise to that level. But come at night and it's a lot of young people, college-age people, playing for hours at much higher decibels. Um, so that's all I wanna say about that.
All right, thank you. I do see raised hand, but, uh, we gotta move on for time. So we're going to the next agenda item, which I believe is three D. This is motion. Department of Parks and Recreation and the City Council to address noise nuisances for residents living near outdoor pickleball courts. Um, it has a lengthy whereas session, a section. It makes a few requests in the be resolved section. Um, the biggest one probably being requesting a three hundred fifty-foot, uh, ban on a pickleball playing near residences. So this only goes forward if we have a board member who makes a motion to consider the resolution for a vote. And we have a second board member who, uh, seconds it. So do we have any board members who would like to make a motion to consider the resolution for a vote? If so, raise your hand or shout it out. Going once? Going twice? Okay, I'm seeing here no board members who are making a motion to consider this resolution. So I apologize, Mr. Suarez, we're not gonna be having a vote on it. Um, again, I'm, uh, sorry, your resolution didn't make it through, but Department of Parks and Recreation, you know, I, I don't understand the science, so I can't comment on that, but I, I will help you follow up with them to get any sort of accommodation that, um, they're able to give you. So, you know, I'll, I'll be in touch with you um, in the next couple of days about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're now out of the unfinished board business section at this time, uh, sharing Member Watson's concerns about us not getting certain things finished in time. I'm going to, um, exercise precedent that a previous chairs have done and use my prerogative as chair to move us forward to Roman numeral number six, uh, discussions. And there's three items here. So the first of these is item six A, good governance reforms at the Hawaii State Legislature from Aria Juliet. Aria, are you, uh, available?
Hi, Dave. I am available. I do wanna do a time check for this board meeting and see if there's an out at nine o'clock.
It's, uh, ten.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, go ahead and, uh, and, and just for context, uh, we're not the only board getting this presentation. Apparently, um, a bunch of the boards on the island have been getting, um, the same or very similar presentation for this res without, um, that Aria is proposing. So um, our board's including that. So we'll go forward with it and see what, uh, Aria has to tell us. So, Aria, please go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you so much, Board, for letting me, um, present to you tonight. Uh, my name is Aria Juliet Castillo. I am from Papa. I am working with Common Cause, our Hawaii and the Clean Elections Coalition. We are circulating a potential resolution among the neighborhood boards and community groups that is encouraging the state legislature to make some small rules changes on how the legislature operates and hopefully making the process more transparent, fair, and accessible. Are you guys able to see my screen?
Uh, like your screen's being sure but it's a blank white page.
All right, never mind then. Um, I'll just talk through it. So I have been working in advocacy for over ten years now and I continue to see community members get engaged in legislature, legislative process, but quickly become frustrated and disillusioned. We've seen really egregious examples of corruption, pay-to-play politics, as well as pretty frustrating examples of bills that just never seem to get a hearing or, um, have a few select lawmakers hold all the power and make all the decisions for the way that the legislature is moving forward. To address some of these problems, in twenty-twenty-two, the Hawaii State Legislature convened Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct for the purpose of reforming basic underpinnings of our state governance, specifically laws surrounding corruption, lobbying ethics, and campaign spending. In the final report that the CSIC gave, they said that the legislators failed to act on some of the most impactful proposals, including prohibiting unilateral power to kill bills. Um, identifying the requestor when a bill is introduced by request and, uh, allowing public testimony to be available immediately. So this resolution picks up on those recommendations and we're hoping that Manoa Neighborhood Board, among others, will be willing to support this effort to encourage these rules changes. The first rules changes that we are proposing is having all testimony be made publicly available twenty-two hours before a hearing. This ensures that an open and informed decision-making process can happen. Right now, the rules at the state legislature are just that it has to be available before the hearing is happening, but that doesn't give the community members or the committee members enough time to get a better understanding of the issues. Regarding committee referrals, committees must vote on all of the referred bills. Um, both of the House and Senate have adopted rules that give just the committee chairs the power to decide which bills are gonna be moving forward in their committees and get hearings or not. And effectively, it only takes one chair to kill a bill. Allowing the committee as a whole to vote on the deposition of all of bills allows more of the committee to have a say in what is getting processed and what is getting heard at the state legislature. Regarding referrals, we feel that non-fiscal bills should bypass the Finance and Ways and Means Committee. This will reduce bottleneck and streamline the process for greater efficiency and fairness. Right now, the Finance Chair has a lot of power to kill bills that don't necessarily have a financial impact. Um, this isn't necessarily because they intentionally trying to, but they have so many bills referred to them that don't necessarily have to be there. Um, for example, last year, there was a bill that was referred to finance, which would allow state agencies to publish public notices on websites as alternatives to newspapers, which are very costly and pretty much out of circulation right now. Um, but it didn't get a hearing at all because it was in finance and just didn't get a priority. Regarding cosponsorship, this would allow bills with a majority of support to guarantee, be guaranteed a hearing. Um, this promotes collaboration, ensures that bills with broad support would receive proper consideration and ensure that popular bills can be blocked by a few select leaders. Um, last year, for example, there was a bill about animal endangerment. Um, this would allow law enforcement, firemen, or even private citizens to enter an unattained vehicle where a pet or an animal may be in danger, such as an overheating car. Um, but it didn't get a hearing, even though it was supported by nine of our, nineteen of our representatives. Um, regarding bills introduced by request, no anonymous by request introductions, all bills must have a disclosure on who requested the bill that's being introduced. Oftentimes, by request packages that are simply packages that are submitted by the governor or various caucuses, but there are some cases where there's just a bill introduced by request and the origin of that bill is not being made, not disclosed to the public. So it could be introduced by a lobbyist or a lobbying firm, but the public doesn't really know. It's kind of easy to figure out in the end when people are testifying on it, but it just promotes greater transparency if you know in the beginning where the origin of the bill came from. And then regarding term limits, um, enacting term limits for chairs and leadership positions, um, regular leadership rotation would just ensure fresh perspectives, greater accountability, and it would balance the distribution of influence and power within the legislature. So there only isn't just a few people at the very top who have all the power and would empower your lawmakers um, to have more decision-making ability. So the legislature adopts its own procedures and rules of operation because the constitution of the state of Hawaii has very few requirements, so to what actually has to happen, how they process. Um, so making these rules changes would allow the legislature to be more transparent and ethical. Um, we're coming up into, uh, twenty-twenty-five, which we're gonna have a new House Speaker, possibly soon, a new Senate President. Um, and with that comes your chairmanship. So right now is the perfect opportunity to ask the House and Senate to make these adoptions. We hope that with these rules changes, we'll have a legislature that has more transparency, efficiency, fairness, and accountability. Um, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to my presentation. I do hope that the, um, Manoa Neighborhood Board would consider passing this resolution, um, at the next board meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Aria. And when all sent this, uh, draft, the, the earlier draft of this resolution to me, I advised her that I wanted her to get feedback from the board to see if, first off, the board is sympathetic to it. And if so, which specific, um, items in the proposed resolution board members would be interested in or not interested in. So uh, feedback is definitely being sought here and would be appreciated. So first, I see a hand from Member Watson. Uh, Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I think it's a good idea. And I think that you should give the neighborhood assistant a copy of the written resolution or the written, whatever you just said, so that the board members can study it. And maybe there's some things we want and there's some things we wouldn't support. But I think you should also add to it. And Elton, you can help me here. After all of the hearings and after crossover, then there's a period where there's no more public testimony and all the the big wigs meet behind closed doors. And it's horse trading. You vote for my bill, I'll vote for your bill. The public doesn't know, screw the public, so we don't care, and they pass what they want. I want that reconciliation or whatever it's called, done, eliminated. No more horse trading, guys. You know, you're there to represent the people. You You just have to get your bills passed and voted on by the end of the session, by the deadline, just like kids in school or college kids. The term ends, your term papers do. You take your exam, you're done. And if you don't, then you flunk. So I think it needs to be the same for the legislature. Forget this backroom deal. Because they just do the, they just let people, my feeling is, they let people testify. They hear from the public, they drink their coffee, they take their Prozac first. They let us na 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 na, and they really don't care because they're going to do horse trading at the end of the day, or the chair's not gonna advance it to another committee, so it dies. So the elected people have total control anyway, and they just let us pretend that we're influencing because for the sake of transparency, they let us submit written or verbal testimony. They don't have to listen to a darn thing. They don't have to make a decision. They do it all behind closed doors. And I think that needs to be, and thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Watson. I'm going to go next to Member Fukamoto. Member Fukamoto, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. Number one.
Oh, we can barely hear you. Elton, Elton, sorry, we can barely hear you.
Can you hear me better now? Is it better?
No, not quite, Elton. You guys speak closer to the mic.
I'm trying to speak as close as I can. Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, number one. I personally would like to amend some of the proposals. So when you, when the resolution comes to us, I might want to amend some of these. And but I know you're trying to get the kind of uniform resolution passed. But it seems to me that if you're going through this particular system, you probably don't welcome amendments, but I think they're going to have to be open to amendments. And number two, this is a question really for the board. I've worked at the state legislature for three or four different representatives, so I'm familiar with the process. If the board member is not familiar with the process, it might be difficult to understand what this resolution is really asking for. So I'm asking board members, would you be comfortable in actually voting on this sort of a resolution? Thank you.
So I will say that if we do, in going forward with the resolution, because legislative procedure can get really weird and counterintuitive, I will ask that either in the text of the resolution or when presenting the resolution, that Aria or whoever her proxy is gives a point-by-point breakdown of how the process works so that everyone's able to fully understand what they're voting on in order to address someone's concern. And we'll also, time permitting, I'll budget space and meeting to allow for potential amendments and the debate that comes with it. Do we have any other comments or questions on this item from anyone in the meeting? Mr. DeMarco, excuse me, Member DeMarco, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I had to click a lot of buttons to turn on my camera and mic, so thank you for taking it away. I just wanted to comment that I support the intention of what you're up to and applaud your efforts to make some targeted improvements at the legislature and look forward to the specific checks of a resolution that might be put forward. Thank you.
All right. Further comments or questions from board members or community members? One once.
Can I just reply to Elton really quickly?
Yes, please go ahead.
It is true that we are circulating this throughout all of the neighborhood boards. Something that's been incredibly wonderful to witness is all the different dynamics and issues that are going on in the individual neighborhood boards. Everyone is so spirited and seeing democracy at this level is just very inspiring. I think it's actually encouraged for, you know, each board to adopt their own version because I think it's helpful for your lawmakers to know which parts of the rules changes are really important to you and which parts of the process you're having struggles with. So highlighting those specific things is actually pretty great. And being able to compare maybe the issues or the concerns that are happening in Manoa that might be not so important and are happening in Hawaii, I think that's actually helpful for the communities and all of the lawmakers.
All right, thank you, Aria. And the reception from the board, I think, was broadly positive. So I will intend to put this on the agenda for November, so you can present a final version. We can pass it possibly with amendments and hopefully get it in before the ledge starts up in January. So thank you, Aria, and I'll see you again next month. All right, everyone. To item six B, changes to time and location of monthly meetings. So as a brief recap from last time, I contacted Principal Guzman, who has jurisdiction over the Nolani Cafeteria area. He said that they have Wi-Fi that can be used for webex meeting. There's a form online that we need to apply to to get facility access. And he says that we can use it as long as we are, as long as the meeting is adjourned by nine P M. So we either need to start at seven and at nine and have a two-hour meeting or start at six thirty, have a two-and-a-half hour meeting or something like that, as long as that we're adjourned at nine. Before, well, in addition to discussing the possibility of Nolani, I was also informed by Member Moylan that we might have another possible venue for in-person meeting location. So, Member Moylan, would you like to share with us your discussion with our former governor?
Well, yes, I passed on his email in hopes of not taking up too much time at these meetings because, as you know, we always struggle to get done in three hours. So a two-and-a-half or two-hour meeting makes no sense to me. Anyway, he said that he had not made progress since our last meeting because they have been spending all their time on hiring the new president of UH. But he was hopeful that between this and the next meeting, we might see some progress. I would be very reluctant to say we're going to now shorten all our meetings, move them to a different time, go to the school or whatever, and give up on the UH alternative, which I think would be far superior.
I'll note that about a year ago, we were changing to a different venue and starting our meetings earlier. There were some members who had concerns about a start time at six or before seven. So I didn't put in, put a vote up for this agenda because I wanted time to discuss Member Moylan's idea and also wanted board members to air any concerns they have about starting at six thirty or earlier. So there's no votes slated, but I do want to have discussion. Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I think that we can start, actually, at least how I feel. We can start at six thirty. A lot of times when our elected representatives are going to host something at Manoa Cafeteria or, you know, Neighborhood Security Watch things or whatever they want to do, they start at six thirty. And if people don't come till seven, then they don't come till seven. And I think that that's reasonable. I think doing it at Nolani is good because it has Wi-Fi and it's accessible and has parking. And we had it there for years. And two and a half hours is fine for our meeting. The reason why we can't get done in two and a half hours is because we run very inefficient, long-winded meetings. I think, I think that that's true. And when we had meetings before, we'd be done an hour, hour and a half at Nolani. So I don't know why it just goes on and on and on for just a couple of issues take up two hours. You know, it's just kind of crazy. But, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, people just kind of drop off in their intention span after two and a half hours. And so I think we should just take it and do it. And the university, even if Abercrombie wants us to be there or something else, is not going to happen. And Homer has already said, we're not going to have free parking. If events are going, we're not going to have parking at all, and he can't guarantee us anything. So it's a no-go. Even if Neil Abercrombie thinks he can make it go. So I think we just take Nolani, we ask our board, we call for a vote of doing that, have Anson fill out the paperwork, and we have a hybrid November meeting. That's, we don't have to make a big labyrinth out of this that goes on and on for two or three meetings while we think about it. I just think that's crazy. But anyway, that's how I feel. I don't know how other board members feel.
A second, first, quick procedural question from Anson. Would you be the person, Anson, to fill out the procedure, the facility use form, or would a board member or the chair fill it out?
First, we, it'll be, I believe it'll be us. But we have to check first if, if we can have it over there. So we needed to know the pricing also. The pricing also matters. So that's
And what's the timetable to get all this stuff checked, like?
We can get this checked by next month, the next board meeting, we can have it done.
Yeah, but Anson, you can just call the school and get the information and fill it out. I mean, Russell Hall, you should just get it done in a couple of days. So this is not a big process. The school has their application. You fill it out, and you'll know the cost. Besides which, you've been saving tons and tons of paying for facilities money ever since the pandemic. So you stockpiled our money. There's plenty of money for it. And I think you're making a big deal out of this. This is like easy, one-day, no-brainer thing to do by the NCO. I mean, for years, they do.
That's just our procedures that we do. Someone asks us if we can have it at this location, we will have to check with them. And if we can do it, we can do it. Can we can't? Sorry, that's just our procedure.
Okay, thank you, Member Watson and Anson. At this time, I'll call on Member Fox. Member Fox, please go ahead.
Thank you. I do support the idea of having a meeting at Nolani School. Also, I'd love to have a change of the time of our meeting from six P M to nine instead of seven to ten. It's almost a late meeting for us after we work all day long. And to have this meeting at seven o'clock at night. Most of us have bad habits and things to be concerned for. I hope we can adjust maybe the time and do the only thing to make it feasible for them. Thank you.
All right, so Member Fox was a bit staticky there, but my understanding was that he was encouraging us to move to six P M to nine P M meeting. Is that correct? I see him nodding. Okay, so Member Fox encourages a six to nine.
Six to nine, Nolani School. I think that's a great proposition.
Could you live with six thirty, Robert? I'll do whatever you want. People might be driving home from work at five, right?
So, yeah, I'll do six thirty, but I mean, going to ten, five.
All right, let's go in order. There's people raising their hands. I'll go with Member Fukamoto and then Member Koff. Member Fukamoto, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so one question is for the members of the board. Is six thirty too early? Is six o'clock too early? I'm in favor of starting at six thirty and ending at nine. I think we can telescope our time into two and a half hours. Should be no problem. And we're familiar with Nolani. We've had it there for many years prior to the pandemic. That's a location that we are familiar with. So that's a good place and a good time. Thank you.
All right, Member Koff, please go ahead.
Yes, I support the same, the same thing. I think we should start at six thirty and end at nine, and I'm in favor of going to the Nolani School. I think the parking is easy. It's a very convenient location. And I think we'll be happy there, actually. Okay.
All right, and Member DeMarco, please go ahead.
I also support meeting earlier, and the Nulani School sounds great to me as well. Thank you.
Okay, and I see a raise hand on Anson's screen, whoever that is, please go ahead.
I typically work till six thirty or seven. I came straight here from work and didn't even get done. Six o'clock starting time would be a burden for me, and so I would not be in favor of that move. Thank you.
So six o'clock would be a burden for you, Member Moylan, and in six thirty, I'm guessing it would also be a problem because you typically end work at six thirty?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. I just saw you shrugging. Could you?
Yes, that's an accurate summary, Chair.
All right, got it.
He would have to join the meeting by seven, yeah?
Yeah, Member Zane, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in the same position with the Member Moylan as well. My work tends to get pretty late, too. And I might be able to do six thirty, but if anything, I'd be okay with jumping in late at about seven o'clock later on.
Okay, then. So Anson, because you said it's going to take you about a month to get all the things checked and verified. So, remember Watson had told me in an email that she would prefer to do a vote at this meeting by adding it to the agenda, and I think she also said as much at the meeting. But as far as I can tell, there's no point in doing that if we
Board members want to do it, so Anson can line it up.
What I'm saying, Watson, is there's no point in doing it if Anson can't get the stuff verified until November anyway. We might as well just do the vote in November. Am I understanding this correctly?
He could carry the application to him and fill it out. And so all he has to do is ask his boss if that's okay and then sign off. So we can help him if he needs a whole month to do it.
I'll just ask Anson, is what Member Watson prefers, is that at all doable? Is that at all a possibility, or is that just a no-go?
I, now, I'm not really too sure. Just most of the time, we're just trying to find a new location. That's how we've just been doing it. We just, they ask us what location they want to do it. We, in the next month, we provide that information if we can or cannot. That's all we've been doing like that.
All right, in that case, I guess we'll just be, we'll be doing the agenda item next month. What we will have a vote, I'm going to put on the agenda, Anson, a quick question. If, for example, I put on the agenda, say, six thirty to nine, changing it to Nolani, six thirty to nine, could we then, during the meeting, change?
Yeah, we just vote on that now, Chair. And then if the board wants to do it and passes, then Anson can run it up the flagpole, and it's done. We can meet there in November.
Let me ask Anson, how many board members do we currently have? Do we have at least twelve?
Do you want me to do a roll call again?
We only need nine, Chair.
Because Member Watson wants to add a vote to the agenda that's not on the agenda.
It's already on the agenda, so we don't have to add anything to the agenda. It's already agendized. You just have to ask if somebody wants to make a motion for a vote from six thirty to nine at Nolani, and we vote, and you get a second. So call for a motion.
Anson, is Member Watson correct, or do we need twelve to add this to the agenda for a vote?
Well, it's already on the agenda, so technically she is somewhat correct. But due to the fact that the agenda doesn't specify what we're doing, I suggest we, I advise we shouldn't bullshit it because it's not specifically asking like what time or what location we want to have the meeting at. But if you're okay with it, we can just do it.
Okay, thanks, Anson. We have fifty minutes left. We're spending time on this. And it's effectively a moot point because we can't do it anyway until November when Anson's verified all the stuff. So we're not going to vote today. We're going to do it in November. Moving to the next item is item sixty, board committees and permitted interaction groups. This I put on at request of a Member DeMarco who wanted to discuss the possibility of making a committee or permit interaction group. So does Mr. DeMarco or anyone else for that matter have any thoughts on this that they wanted to share? Member DeMarco, please go ahead.
If I'm just raising it for discussion with the boards, it's something that I've done on other boards that I've served on, and I see it as a way of allowing for the level the level of discussion and public inputs to be transferred to a committee meeting and free up time during our full board meeting that the committee's recommendations can be presented and hoping that that can streamline our processes. So that's where I'm coming from with the request. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Member DeMarco. Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we had problems with, um, committees in the past, uh, Member DeMarco, and only because I think a lot of new board members didn't read the neighborhood plan and they didn't understand that the committee served at the pleasure of the board to research something or get public input to report back to the board, and they were acting like they were their own board and having the city come and make formal presentations, or the University of Hawaii come and make formal presentations to them, and then the committee come back and give us their condensed version through their internal paradigm, and it just kind of usurped the whole purpose of the board. So I'm not sure that our board understands a role of a committee, and I'm not sure they understand the role of a permitted interaction group. And so without having some kind of substance for that, I know that you do because you served on other boards, and committees can be very good, and pigs can be very useful for specific one topic things, but we have not had luck in our committees because they just kind of go rogue. And so then we, board members are frustrated, and I don't know how we deal with that. Uh, maybe they just need a committee education first. Maybe you know about that. You can make a presentation to our board on how that works. Anyways, my thoughts.
Okay, um, Member Moilan or whoever's on Anson Wu's screen, please go ahead.
Am I on now? Okay.
Yes, you are.
Well, I have served on committees, and, uh, that's the way things are done efficiently. Our member, our new member is absolutely right about that. And one of the reasons that some of our things take months and some of our meetings go long is that we don't do enough work on committees of P I Gs. Um, I think that the people who are on this board can be trusted to learn how to work on a committee if they haven't done it before. It's absolutely the way to do it. I'm on a new board myself, the Hart Board, and immediately I have to sign up for which committee I'm going to work on because they do all their work in committees like other boards I've served on. And so, uh, that's absolutely the way to go, especially if anyone is trying to argue that we're going to have a shorter meeting time. If you're going to cut down to two and a half hours or two hours, then you absolutely should be doing stuff on committee instead of hashing things out in this, these huge meetings the way we're currently doing. So I, I agree with the proposed.
All right, uh, any further comments or questions from board members or community members on premiered interaction groups and our committees? Uh, Member Bosso, please go ahead. Uh, Member Bosso, please go ahead.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, I just wanted to say I don't think that there were any problems with previous committees that we had, other than that some people wanted to exactly be, be a part of longer presentations that were in order to get in-depth presentations, like forty minute presentations on a topic that we just simply don't have the time for in allotted meetings. And they didn't want to join the committees, but they wanted that information, which simply like can't really function, um, you know, with our, our time constraints. So I, I don't think that there's any problem in having uh, presentations to a committee that can then be summarized and the, you know, the minutes went out of the different committees that were publicly available. It was all according to sunshine law. Uh, there was one or two board members who had an issue with it, and that's it. No, I did not hear any issues from other people regarding, regarding that.
All right, thank you, Member Wat, uh, excuse me, thank you, Member Bosso. Uh, Member Koff, please go ahead.
I do support the idea of having, uh, these smaller, uh, meetings because this way we will be able to handle the volume of work that's put out for us, uh, more effectively. You know, and with more streamlined effect. I, I think I agree with that. Just voicing my opinion here. Okay.
All right, thanks, Member Koff. I see a raised hand on Anson Wu's screen. Is, is that just stuff from earlier, or did you have something you wanted to?
Oh, sorry. Uh, it was just something earlier.
All right, thanks. So in that case, I, I guess I'll ask, um, since it sounds like we have members who want to do committees or premier interaction groups, are there specific permitted interaction groups or specific committees that they would like me to put on next month's agenda to vote on creating the committee? They could tell me now, or they could also email me later, but did you want to, uh, announce now at this meeting which committees or permitted interaction groups you wanted to form? Going once? Going twice? Oh, Member Koff, please go ahead.
Do you want to have a P I C on, uh, development, Manoa developments, you know, proposed developments in Manoa? Someone, a group that would track those developments? That propose here? For example, Aria Lane of, that are, we can separate it, but, uh, Aria Lane is what's happening with the cemetery project, the Banyan Plaza, whatever. So the various ones that have been proposed here, so we can have a group that's just primarily tracking these, telling us whether we have to write other resolutions or whatever else is up that we should be aware of.
Okay, I, I don't think that would be a promoted interaction group because permitted, permitted interaction groups only meet three times for a no purpose, but I think that could be a committee, so, uh, development, tracking committee, or something to that effect. So, um, I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting to vote on whether we want to create such a committee. If we do create one, it will need at least two board members, a chair and a vice chair, additional board members can join, and also community members who aren't on the board can join. So that'll be on the next month's agenda, and uh, if there's additional premier interaction groups or committees that people want to form, then they can also email me and I can put that on the agenda. Uh, all right, any further discussion on this topic? If not, we're returning to, um, the normally structured agenda. Okay, uh, we're going now to Roman numeral four, City Monthly Reports, a Board of Water Supply, Dominic Diaz, Dominic or someone else from B W. Going once? Going twice, okay. Not seeing anyone. Uh, next is item four B, Rick, Rick Blangiotti's representative, Kim Sparland. Kim, are you, uh, on the meeting tonight? Oh, I see you. Go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. Um, couple of updates and report backs. First thing, the beginning of the meeting, I put in the mayor's newsletters, some updates on what's going on with the transit system, the All Rest Spit facility that did open last month. Um, that is addressing those that are housing, I think I heard housing challenged, um, earlier this evening, so, uh, different, um, acute medical treatments can be done there and then hopefully getting them, uh, wraparound services to encourage them to take advantage of other services. So it's just part of the overall, um, strategy, you know, no one thing is going to do it. It's just part of the overall strategy. So we're really proud of that. Um, the medical examiner's facility has been upgraded and we now have a deputy medical examiner that started yesterday, so we're really excited about that and the work that they're going to be doing. Um, not only for those that unfortunately have passed, but learning from that to help us keep us, uh, safe as well for those that, that are still here. Um, new lifeguard tower on Oahu South Shore, so it's the second time in thirteen months that we've opened a new one. And just an F Y I that there are, um, electrical upgrades that are going to be happening at the Waikiki Shell. So this month through late March twenty twenty-five, the show will be closed for events as they're doing those upgrades. That's exciting. The next thing, not so exciting, I'm sure, however, um, really, really important, one of those things that uh, infrastructure and quality of life upgrades that we have to do and that has to do with sewer um, and wastewater and part of our administrative order of consent and, um, upgrades to our system are forcing, uh, rate increases. And so Chair Nagaji, I'm putting into the chat, um, who to contact so that E N V can come out and make a presentation on that. There'll be slight increases year over year um, to acknowledge one cost of living so that it's not a big one-time increase, but also getting some of that cash flow upfront so that we can move forward with that. Um, and those improvements that just, that have to happen, um, by law. Um, couple of report backs, uh, street parking, so I spent a lot of time on that earlier. And thank you for acknowledging, um, that really the process is just for the board to acknowledge it. So it's one of the, it's one of the avenues for transparency, right? We all want transparency, and I mean, if you guys write your letter, that, that's fine. Um, not, I'm encouraging you one way or another, but just kind of consider that, you know, when you want transparency, this is one of those venues. You don't have to vote on it. Like I said in, um, the information previously to Chair, it doesn't even have to be on the agenda. Somebody can just say, look, I've done this. Um, can you guys just acknowledge it and put it in the minutes? And then it just gets read, and it says that yes, there were fifteen people on this list, all fifteen agreed. It doesn't have to be, um, a whole hour worth of discussion, frankly. It can, it can, it just needs to be acknowledged so that there is public presentation. D T S can't be everywhere, as you guys have acknowledged, putting things in the newspaper isn't necessarily the best way to get the information out. And we definitely see the value in neighborhood boards and sharing information with the neighborhood. So I encourage you to, um, still be a part of that process as we move forward. Um, parks, you guys talked about pickleball, I think, uh, Members Zane, thank you for sharing the email from um, parks regarding the trees and, um, the director working on that issue. There's a few other issues that they're working on. They have been working with H P D to do more frequent uh, visits to the park, especially after hours. Um, but there'll be a little bit more formal response to that next month. So that being said, and in the consideration of time, I'd like to just go ahead and open it up to questions, Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Uh, I see a raised hand from Member Watson. Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Kim. Uh, question is, um, now that Blangiotti will have it because he won the primary, right? So, you know, he's running unopposed except for whatever, whoever Republican wants to run against him. Anyway, he'll win. So now I'm really concerned because um, he doesn't have to run for reelection again, correct? And so I'm really worried about the stormwater utility, and I figured he wasn't gonna uh, hit us with a new utility, uh, certainly till after the election, and then we're kind of stuck with them, right? Um, and I worry about that because the state legislature approved that the city and county of Honolulu can implement a whole new utility like our HECO bill, like our Board of Water Supply bill. Now we'll have a stormwater bill and um, and I'm really worried that Rick's gonna do that, and that really concerns me a lot because he has nothing to lose now. And what also concerns me about that, because it'll be a cash cow fund forever, is that fees will keep increasing, but what concerns me about that is city council recognize that and city council is going to take part of that money to pay for homeless belonging storage in a climate controlled and public storage somewhere.
Ellen, if you can wrap it up, please.
In their shopping cart. And so I worry that it's going to be a cash fund that we're going to be stuck paying, that Blangiotti is going to implement, and city council has their fingers in the pot already. Um, and I'm worried about that. So what can you say about that?
A couple of things, just for sake of clarity, um, the mayoral election is nonpartisan. So the way that that works is in the primary election, if the mayor gets fifty percent plus one vote, uh, there is no runoff election. So yes, mayor has exceeded that fifty percent plus one. There is no runoff in November because that would only be if there were, he did not get the fifty percent plus one. So that is the mechanic. Um, yes, he is reelected. So thank you, everyone, for that support and that, uh, encouragement. We appreciate that. With respect to the budget, there was one other thing I wanted to say with respect to um, the cost of the facility for future meetings. The way that the budget works at the city is you, you spend it or you lose it. So we have not been shy of putting money away, you know, during COVID and all this time that can now be used. That's not the way that it works. Okay, so it, if it lapses, it gets swept back. Um, so NCO doesn't have a whole bunch of money sitting there, you know, to, to then move on. To that point though, um, when there's a special fund like this, in many cases, and I can probably better to, to say council can address this, but it's my understanding that if there is a special fund, it is meant for that special purpose. It's not then moved around. So if it's set up as a special fund, that's where the money then has to be spent for those purposes. If the money is put into the general funds, and that's a different thing, and the general funds then get, you know, every year allocated to wherever it is. Is there fear for a stormwater utility? Is that legitimate? Yeah, probably. The reality is we have a lot of issues, infrastructure issues that have to be dealt with at the city and county level. Whether we like it or not, whether it was kicked down, um, you know, down the road or not, I mean, when you just look at all of our infrastructure, and yes, there's electric, we're talking about storm waters, we're talking about wastewater, we're talking about trash, all of that stuff that, that we just have to do. And I can tell you this, having heard it again this morning, the mayor, the managing director, everybody in that cabinet room does not want to increase real property taxes. So what we have to do is we have to find some revenue in other ways. I cannot tell you at this time what that's going to be, or when that announcement is going to be made. I will note the concerns. But I, I cannot say yes or no. We, there's too many things that the mayor, the budget director, and the cabinet is having to juggle in order to provide core city services.
All right, thank you, Kim. Member Watson, uh, we'll go to Member Fukamoto now, and then we'll move on for time. Uh, Member Fukamoto, please go ahead. Member Fukamoto, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, Director Sparland. I understand that the Aria Lane presentation is going to be made sometime next week. I don't believe the board has actually, uh, received any kind of official notice about it. We, we've received, um, a, uh, star advertiser uh, opinion piece by Ellen Sofia that, that mentions it, but we haven't gotten anything official from the mayor. So if you could remind us when it is and whether written testimony as well as oral testimony is going to be, um, accepted. And, and if you don't know, uh, can you tell us what website we should go to to find that information?
I'm sorry, when you say there's a presentation, are you referring to the city council? Because they have a full council meeting next week, Wednesday.
D P P is offering it.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I will try and get that information by the end of this meeting and put it in the chat. I will also email it to Chair and Anson so they can get that distributed. Um, and if I don't get it by the end of this meeting, I will, I will follow up and make sure to get that information to Chair and Anson to get distributed to you as well. Oh, look at that, October seventh, ten thirty A M. Last year.
And, and I'll also note that it's included. Oh, go ahead, Member Fukamoto.
I, I'd like to know whether written and oral testimony will be accepted.
Yes, uh, so you only answer that, Kim? This isn't any announcements. Um, it's an announcements on the agenda, so we'll get to that for announcements. Thanks.
Okay.
Um, okay, moving on to our next. I don't think you, Kim, for, uh, sticking with us to nearly the end again. Uh, we're now going to our last C monthly report, uh, C, C Council Member Kelvin Say. We have a representative from Councilman Say.
Aloha, everyone. This is Poa from Councilmember Say's office. Um, my, my report will be as brief as possible. Um, so I did put in the monthly report for October, our month. Um, so I did put in the monthly report for October, our monthly newsletter in October in the chat. Um, and also the um, important web X or the website links such as real property tax. Make sure to check the dates on the real property tax um. Web, Web X uh, or link just so that everybody's on time in regards to that. Um, funding for Oahu businesses, um, all the way watershed control, they're all in the chat at the moment. Um, long term projects or C I P projects, um, we talked last week, we spoke last week about the gymnasium at Manoa Valley District Park. It looks like it's um, it's looking at the date of the first quarter of twenty twenty five that it will be reopened and will be repaired and fixed. Um, Manoa Palolo Stream Wall repairs, um, it's still in its plan and design phase. And um, there's erosion control improvements by Manoa Stream. Um, and that's looking at the fourth quarter of twenty twenty five. Um, other um, things that are happening in the community. Um, we have some uh, no parking signs that we need to replace on thirteen forty seven Cuny White Street. Um, we're in the process of having that um, done by the Department of Facility Maintenance. Um, there are a couple of overgrowth uh, locations in um, Manoa. That the Department of Plan and Permitting is uh, recognizing and they're issuing uh, the list of violations for a couple of homes in Manoa Community. Um, also again, uh, with the request of uh, June He that um, request for investigative services has gone to the Department of Transportation. Um. I think that is it, um, if there's any questions or concerns, please, that means I'm ready for that. Mahalo.
All right, I see a raise hand from John Coff, uh, Member Coff, please go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to ask whether or not what's going on in the Manoa Pool. Why, why is that out of commission?
Okay, so the Manoa Pool was out of commission because there was actually like a four, it, there was an overgrowth of algae that was done, was on the surface of the pool. So they're actually um, draining, when they were trying to clean it, the sides of the pool was act, was, was getting taken off. Like actually the areas in the pool was, was flaking off, so they did close the Manoa Pool. Um, they're looking at trying to update it as quick as possible. Um, but there are some, there, there are some people that are wanting um, specific things. In addition to just the repair of the pool, um, like heated showers and other facilities that can be improved. So of course, having those requests will take it a little bit longer, but it's something that we already put in the system to the Department of Parks and Recreation. For those rec, for those uh, suggestions and recommendations for the Manoa Pool. Um, and that's in process at the moment, so that was just done last week.
Well, so there's no uh, indication when this will be repaired or finished.
Correct, there's no update for the pool at the moment.
They're doing the bottom surface of the pool, the actual bottom surface of the pool.
Yes, the bottom and the sides, because they were flaking off.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I see a raise hand from Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you, hey, Poa, a couple of things, one is um, can you provide me a copy of the written contract that the city has? With the Humane Society, because the Humane Society is a third party vendor. And we tend to think of them as part of Hawaii, but really they're an outside business, third party vendor that bids on a contract. And um, I'd like to review that contract and then maybe we want to consider having a different organization run. The Hawaiian Humane Society, so I don't know if the city owns that name. Or that particular company owns that name, but there's a lot of really good um. Rescue kind of groups and times have really changed and maybe it's time for us to upgrade. Um, because they have very unusual limiting hours now. They're almost run like a doggy daycare kind of hours. And when they close and, and maybe we need to be looking at. A different company uh, with a new fresh approach to meet our needs on in that regard.
Ellen, can you give back that real quickly?
The other thing I wanted to ask is um. I'd like Calvin to introduce something at City Council that uh. Undoes what City Council voted to have before, and that is to have their fingers in the pot. Of the stormwater utility money to designate, have a designated. Special fund that goes to City Council, that City Council wants to store homeless people's belongings. When they do sweeps or cleanup areas, because they're having to store those. In like a public storage, climate controlled environment in case the homeless want to go get their stuff and their shopping cart and all that. And they want the public to pay for it with a designated fund that's embedded in the stormwater utility. And I have somewhere all the paperwork on that and the bill and everything. But City Council voted to stick their fingers in the stormwater utility that hasn't been.
Wrap it up, please.
If you could find that, find that out too, thank you.
Okay, I, I, what I'm understanding is that you want to, you want to see how there's a connection with the funding for stormwater. Drain, uh, sewage is connected to the.
Right, well, City Council passed a measure to take a percentage of that to be used to store homeless people's stuff.
Sorry, Member Watson, if I may, uh, Calvin Say is gonna be out of office in a month, he's getting replaced by Scott Nishimoto. So maybe we can just wait till Nishimoto is sworn in and then we can bring this up to him and ask Nishimoto to uh, take this forward.
He don't know anything about it, just like Poa and Calvin.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll catch you at the meeting. Thank you, Member Watson, and thank you, uh, Member Coff, I'm just gonna take whatever um. Kim wanted to comment with her raised hand, then we're gonna have to move on, uh, Kim, please go ahead.
Yes, and I apologize, I um, Member Coff, I thank you for asking the question about the pool that was on my list and I just got carried away with timing. But um, there, like Poa said, there were concerns about the safety of the pool itself, so they are addressing that. They do expect to have an update by the end of the week, um, but. It would not be surprising if it wasn't closed, if it, it wouldn't be surprising if it was closed through the end of the year. So just setting kind of expectations, that's how bad the damage was. So I just wanted to give you that, that I got this at uh, six twenty nine uh, this evening, just coming into this meeting. So a little bit of an update there, thank you, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Kim, uh, and thank you, Poa, for staying with us to the end, uh, we're gonna have to move on time to a statement of the reports. Oh, yes, Member Fukamoto.
Yes, I've had my hand up, I just wanted to correct um, your statement that Calvin Say will be leaving office in a month. That's true of the state legislature, not true of the city council, so city council members will stay on until January. Thank you.
Okay, I was not aware, uh, thank you for the correction, Member Fukamoto. Um, again, thank you, Poa, for staying late, we're moving on to state monthly reports. Um, I, Senator uh, Carol Fukunaga, Senator Fukunaga available? Or Representative from her office, oh, there she is, please go ahead, Senator.
Okay, in the interest of time, I just wanted to make uh, one quick correction for your minutes. Uh, last month I provided an update on the site visit that uh, several committees took to Maui for Hawaiian Electric's um. Um, review of some of their utility pole. Restorations on Maui, and that was very helpful to us, particularly since many of the poles in Manoa are also of a equally um. Old age, so it wasn't, it wasn't P O L L, it was P O L E. And so earlier today, uh, I'm so sorry, we sent a um, a, a letter memo to the board. Outlining the uh, start of Little Fire Ant Stop the Ant Month in October. Uh, we conducted a uh, community forum in Makiki last week to address the Little Fire Ant. Uh, colonies that have been reported in Papakolea, Kalawahini and in Punchbowl. And to our surprise, we also discovered uh, there are some additional infestations in Makiki Heights and Tantlis. And so with some of the maps that we received, uh, we have. Learned that there are some uh, areas being monitored in Manoa. So in the material I sent to the board today, I included a short fact sheet. Showing, you know, where residents and neighbors can get involved by seeking additional information. And so we would be happy to put that on uh, with the board and with uh, individual neighbors in your area. For those who are not familiar with little fire ants, they're um, not the same as the tropical fire, I mean, the tropical ants. And they can cause um, very severe damage through their um, ant bites. And so that's kind of why we are sort of springing into action. However, um, at this point, I'm happy to take any other questions.
All right, we do have nineteen minutes, so do we have any very quick questions or comments for the Senator? Uh, Member Coff, please go ahead.
I wanted to ask what steps we can take to help with this Bill twenty four. That's uh, that is regarding our zoning changes, you know? And the threat that that bill faces from the Senate Bill thirty two oh two that passed despite our resolution against it. So I just, if there's anything you can guide us with here.
Okay, we did check with uh, the Council uh, Planning and Economy Committee. Uh, originally, the uh, Chair had said that they would be holding hearings in September and October. Uh, she is gonna be holding her hearing on Bill twenty four in October. So that'll be the Thursday in October, I believe it is um, October twenty fourth. And I'm happy to, you know, send a uh, reminder update as soon as the agenda comes out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Coff. Any other questions or comments for Senator going once, going twice, okay? Thank you, Senator Fukunaga, for staying with us till the end, and we'll uh, see you again next month. All right, we're now on to C monthly report. Um, B, Representative Andrew DeCulia Garrett, is Representative Garrett available?
I am here, thank you, Chair.
All right, please go ahead.
Okay, I will also try to keep this brief, uh, thank you for the very lively discussion as part of tonight's agenda. Uh, just on the staffing note for my office, um, sad to report that my office manager Melanie left uh, to accept the position with the city and county. Not too long ago, so I currently don't have an office manager. If anyone on this call knows of anyone who might be interested in applying, please send a resume to my uh, work email at repgarrett@capital.hawaii.gov. Uh, just also want to comment on the um, the presentation earlier from the um, lady with Hapa, the um, regarding House rules. So, you know, she noted, we do have an, an opportunity here, we do have a new speaker coming in. We've been pretty heavily involved in those discussions about who that person might be and what our leadership state is gonna look like. So just want everyone to know that, you know, we are taking a look at everything um, in terms of how we operate as a house. I think some of the things that she mentioned, again, I'm not trying to influence uh, your decision on this next month. But I think there's, there's some merit to some of the proposals, there are some that I think uh, may be a little cumbersome. I think one of the things she said was uh, you know, making sure that every single bill has, is scheduled for a hearing. You know, we do typically have about three thousand bills that are introduced at any given session. So um, you know, it's uh, gonna be really hard to compress that into a sixty day legislative calendar. But I think that does beg the question, one of the things that, you know, we started to look at last year was whether there's any merit for the legislature to move toward a year round model. Right now, we're only in session for four months, um, but you know, if there are people who think that if we had scheduled this, you know, basically, if we became a year round legislature. It would give us more time to do, do a deeper dive on issues. Right now, as a member myself, you know, things really move at a breakneck pace and it's hard to kind of stay on top of everything. You know, if we did move to a full time legislature, that would also probably come with it, prohibiting outside employment. Um, you know, there are a lot of members, we were designed um, as a part time legislature for people to have full time jobs outside of the legislature. But, you know, it does raise questions about um, conflicts of interest and other things like that. So, you know, I certainly entertain that, I think there's some merit to it and worth uh, further discussion. One of the other House rules that I'm personally gonna be pushing for that we change is this whole notion of voting with reservations. Not, you know, in shorthand, it's called voting W R. Um, there is, it is permitted, um, apparently we're the only legislature in, in the whole nation that allows this, but it basically allows for a yes vote, but with reservations. Um, rather than just a straight up or down uh, vote, yes or no, yea or nay. You know, I tell my colleagues all the time, we're voted in by, we represent our constituents and we're there to cast votes if nothing else. So this kind of weaseling out by saying, oh yeah, I'm voting with reservations because I have concerns, I think that's something we need to eliminate. You know, we need to be clear with our constituents and the voters on where we stand on any given issue. So I'm hopefully um, gonna put, I am gonna push for that to get rid of that um, past practice. Uh, lastly, just in terms of a public service announcement, in a couple of weeks, you know, all registered voters are gonna be receiving their ballots in the mail. You know, we had a, a very embarrassing amount of um, turnout in the primary election, thirty two, thirty three percent. Let's, you know, we can certainly do better than that as a state, so just encourage everyone, um, you know, in the, if you haven't registered, please do so. And when your ballots come in, please make sure to submit them before the November fifth deadline. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, we have fourteen minutes, I remember Watson, very quick question or comment, then we have to move, go ahead.
Thank you, Andrew, how um, how do, do things go about getting on the ballot for a vote? Cause one of the things I'd like to see that the public gets to vote on is term limits for our state legislators. And they're never gonna, you're never gonna, the state legislature themselves, just like Congress is never gonna vote that in, so. It, I don't, what, what's kind of, if you can tell us what the process is to get the public to be able to vote for that? Cause I think they'd vote unanimously for it, I think they'd be in big favor of it, and do you know how that works?
Yeah, so the typical vehicle would be through the legislature, but as you mentioned, there are, you know, people who feel like we're um. Foxes guarding the hen house, that we never allow it, but for the record, you know, that's something I personally supported. I've said on many occasions, politics should be a calling, not a career. I worry about people that get, you know, in this position, they stay there for, you know, twenty, thirty years. I mean, there have been some very, you know, noble public servants who have served with distinction over decades. But I think it's important that we, you know, keep the body fresh, um, there, we build in some churn to the system to make sure that um, new ideas are always at the forefront. Um, I believe the only other way to do it would be through a constitutional convention, we don't allow, you know, referendums in Hawaii. Um, but if you had a con con, and again, the last one was uh, the year I was born, nineteen seventy eight, so it's been, you know, forty something years. I don't want to give away my age when I'm doing the math here, but it's been um, forty something years since we last had one. And this would be basically where we bypass the legislature altogether and have citizen delegates um, propose things. So this is how like Oho was created back in nineteen seventy eight, there was a lot of good environmental laws that were passed as part of that con con. But I believe Ellen answered your question, that would be the only way at this point, if we were to bypass the legislature.
All right, thank you, Member Watson, I thank you, Representative, uh, we're gonna move on to our next agenda now, so thank you, uh, likewise, you're staying on so long, see you next month. Uh, next C monthly report is University of Hawaii, Kai, please go ahead.
Hi, Chair, hi, everyone, um, let me keep my report short, let me talk about the presidential search. Um, the two candidates have actually went to all the counties um, the last two weeks. On the border regions on October sixteen, we'll have a special meeting and executive session where they will do an interview of the two candidates. And then hopefully the day after, October seventeen. Um, they will hopefully make a next uh, announcement of who would be the next president, but that's, you know, cross our fingers on that, on that one. I just want to also let you guys know that on October twenty sixth, Saturday, the University of Hawaii will have an open house called U H. Um, Manoa U H Discovery or Discover U H Manoa. Um, it is from ten A M to one P M, it's on the Manoa campus, it's invited everybody, we anticipate about three thousand. Individuals to come, um, and is invited for the whole community. On that same day, about three o'clock, we also have a P I N A um, um, event. P I N A in a pathway on Legacy, it's a part of Homecoming, Homecoming is the twenty sixth of that, that day. Everything else is on my report, um, I put in the chat, and I'm open for any questions, Chair.
All right, I think the owner will take one question or comment from Member Fukamoto, then we have to move forward, Member Fukamoto, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Kai, can you remind us who the two candidates are, their names and their current positions?
Good thing you asked. It's in my report, I'm counting one is Wendy Hensel, she is Chancellor of. She's right now, is it. University of New York Executive Vice Chancellor. Um, of, or in New York, and then the other one is Julian Hensling. Um, he is uh, Michigan, Western Michigan University Provost and Vice President. Um, the information is in my report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Elmer, thank you, Moto, uh, we're gonna move on. Thank you, Alma. Thank you, Mr. Fukamoto. Uh, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, so um, thank you, Alma, for staying till the very end once again. Moving now to Governor Josh Green's Representative Lacey Goshi. Lacey Goshi, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Um, so the Green Administration remains dedicated to addressing key priorities, um, including housing, homelessness, and healthcare. Um, in this month's newsletter, which I linked in the chat, um, we have information about um DOD initiatives to support our community, ongoing efforts to strengthen our international relations, and to boost tourism and more. Um, I, again, the link is in the chat, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lacey Goshi. I see no raised hands. So we're gonna move on to the next agenda item now. Thank you for staying till the end, and we'll see you next month. All right, and now we're into Congressman Ed Case's representative. Is Julia available to give the Congressman's um presentation? Julia from Ed Case's office. Okay, not seeing her. So moving now to Board Business, filling those vacancies for Subdistrict Four. There's three vacancies. Um, we don't have time to do swearing in this meeting, but do we have anyone who wants to be sworn in next meeting to fill a vacancy in Subdistrict Four for our neighborhood board? If so, please shout it out, raise your hand. Going once, going twice. All right, no one's volunteering. We're moving now to Board Business, Item B, Approval of the Wednesday, September fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a to approve those minutes?
I made the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Member Watson made the motion. Uh, do we have a second? If so, shout it out.
I second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Member Watson.
Can we do it?
Yes. Do we have any uh objections to approving minutes?
Did, sorry, this is Member Bosel. Didn't um uh Ms. Fukunaga raise an issue? So can we do it with that adjustment?
Yes, Member Bosel, do you want to suggest an amendment?
Um, I believe it was poll, P O L L to P O L E. I'm not sure exactly where in
Item five.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so I I make the motion that we uh approve the minutes with uh the Senate.
Amendment?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and Member Moilan, do you second that amendment?
It's a non-substantive change. It's a correction, a typo.
Yes. In fact, I tried to pick the original motion in that regard. But yes, that's what we should do.
All right, thank you, everyone. So do we have any objections to approving the minutes with that amendment? All right, seeing and hearing none, the motion is approved. Uh, excuse me, the minutes are approved without amendment. Okay, going to Board Business, Item C, Update on the Primary Urban Center Development Plan. Do we have an update for that? Member Watson, please go ahead.
I forget, uh, there was some update of something that's coming up, yeah, Whitney? Um, but for the life of me, I can't think of what it is. But anyway, you can look at the PUC DP website uh for that coming up, and it may well be correlated with the Aria Lane DPP presentation. Probably, that's it.
I I've been traveling, but I know that they they have been having the meetings, the City Council, um Esther Kiana and the full or or the um sort of, I I can't remember, the committee of the City Council has been having meetings on the PUC DP by by district, and I know, I believe that's continuing still. There was one, I think, on the twenty-third. Um, and there may be another one coming up. We, you know, the one for our neighborhood has already passed.
Okay. Thank you.
But I, there's anything.
Thank you. And then Chair, I want to make sure that Glenn Ortagoro can make an announcement for Be Ready Manoa before we close the meeting, yeah? So we got five minutes, yeah?
Yep, okay.
After we approve the minutes.
Do we have, do we have an update for Manoban Court?
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Oh, yes, uh Glenn Ortagoro, please go ahead.
Yes, we have a uh meeting of Be Ready Manoa uh class uh coming up this Saturday, uh, October fifth, uh, nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. Uh, we're calling on all uh interested Capuna in Manoa Valley only, who are, might be interested in participating in our Capuna Coconut Wireless Program. Uh, we have a class coming up at the the Manoa Valley Church um on the second floor of the gym. Uh, one of those air-conditioned rooms, uh, you just uh come to the front and meet the uh Be Ready Manoa volunteer, and she'll direct you to the class. Uh, you would be required to fill out a uh participation form, and we'll be giving you uh a free walkie-talkie to participate in our uh program. Uh, once a month, we're gonna do a communications test uh with each volunteer to make sure that they understand the process and uh have a working uh walkie-talkie, especially uh when uh we have a emergency or disaster. We want to be able to respond, uh, talk to everybody with a walkie-talkie to uh reach out to them if there's any uh request for assistance that they need. Um, we would be able to pass on information to uh uh first responders if necessary. Anyway, we'll uh try to fill you out with all the details of the program uh during the class on Saturday. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Glenn. Um, so are there any updates for Manoban Court, all the life mitigation, or Aria Lane, other than what was already discussed regarding Aria Lane, the uh public hearing? Any other updates for Banning Court or all the life mitigation? No, we're just gonna move past those, move through those. Uh, I'm just gonna skip the appointment of Representatives to the Malama Manoa General Meeting because that's not till uh mid-November, so we have time on that. We only two and a half minutes for this meeting. Uh, there's a community concerns about overgrown trees and shrubs, but again, that's gonna get pushed next meeting, and I'm gonna go into announcements now. So first announcement is Aria Lane Public Hearing and Testimony Deadline. He is holding a public hearing regarding the Aria Lane St. Francis School redevelopment. This hearing will be held on Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four at ten thirty AM. The location will be the Fosse Municipal Building, sixth-floor conference room, six hundred fifty South King Street. You can also send written testimony by either A, emailing dpp@hongulu.gov, B, faxing eight oh eight seven six eight six seven four three, or C, sending hard copy mail to six fifty South King Street, seventh floor. And any written testimony is due prior to the public hearing. And you don't need to write all that down because that's all in the announcements to get that a testimony in if you want to get it in for Aria Lane. My next announcement is the Malama, Malama Manoa General Membership Meeting, which is gonna be Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at the Bakken Auditorium on the Mid-Pacific Institute Campus from six to eight PM. This event is open to the public. Students at Mid-Pacific Institute collaborated with Malama Manoa to make two hundred fifty Genki balls and tested them in the Wailela Street, um, excuse me, the Wailela Spring for potential use in Manoa Stream. Next announcement, C, is uh the next meeting, which is gonna be held on Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four via WebEx online platform, as well as a couple of Mahalay Conference Room one fifty-three and a little re uh rebroadcast. You can watch on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at three PM or every third Tuesday at nine PM or online on either Olelo or the Sean County Honolulu website. Uh, with that, we have one minute left, and I am going to adjourn unless someone has a quick ten-second announcement. Going once, going twice. Okay, everyone, we are adjourned. See you all in November. Bye.